This meeting is now called. Oh, one second. Before we start, please, place your prayer. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees, Village Manager, and Community Members. Let us bow our heads and pray. Most gracious Father, we thank you for this evening. We thank you most and foremost for waking us up this morning and giving us the activity of our lands. We thank you because we believe in the power of prayer. You said when two or three gathers together, in your name, you're in the midst. So we gather today and we declare that you're here. And because you're here, we ask for your wisdom, your counsel, and your judgment. Bless this session tonight, Father. Let it go forth with power and demonstration of your Spirit and the matter of love. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray and we all say, Amen. Thank you, thank you very much. Meeting is now called. Board of, roll call back to clerk.
Trustee Lewis.
Present.
Trustee Goldblatt.
Present.
Trustee Smith.
Present.
Trustee Jacob.
Present.
Present. Stand for our page of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Our very general public comments.
Yes.
I forgot to sign.
I have received the signature. First question is Ms. Robin Walker.
Hello, hello, board, hello, everybody. Um, matter of fact, can I please ask that these comments or discussions you read into the record, please, and reflect?
You haven't written?
Yes.
If you would give me your written copy.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, I know many may know that I've asked in front of you guys again, pretty much asking for the same things that I've been asking for since March or February. So unfortunately, I am here, and these basically are the simple things. The two things that I'm asking for today are the field renovations, reimbursement, and also the letter of memorandum signage. I know that I'm on the floor. We're gonna discuss that later, so right now, we're just gonna get into the renovations. So I'm gonna read this, because I am tired of repeating myself. I'm just gonna ask the board, so please, get it right this time. I don't understand why I gotta beg you guys for things, because you're in the village. So I'm asking if you could get it right and do what's right finally by this community and our children. Each member on the board has seen and witnessed the lack of services as it relates to the baseball organization and has visualized the filth and the condition of the baseball fields as of recent. Is this correct? Has everybody seen? Trustee Lewis, you have seen, right, correct? Okay, Mayor, you have seen this, right? Okay. So, so the question is, why do I have to ask you guys for things that you have seen? That is the question. And I would like a response back from each board member. Memorandum, we're gonna get to that. So, so the request that I'm asking for, which is the second request, is that the village's property is basically what we had maintained. The village promised to do things by a certain date, they were not done. Everything was supposed to be up and running, ready to go by May 1st. As trustee Lewis witnessed and the mayor, at, on May 7th, they came and witnessed and seen that nothing had been done with the fields, and it was even worse than where we started. So, nothing was done for game time, pretty much by the, by the first day. We had an extension, we had everything done, ready to go, everything scheduled, and we had to basically pay for everything that the village promised that they were gonna do. So that is what we are asking for, for the second time, is a reimbursement back for that. So, total, you guys have emailed, have, have gotten it twice now. I gave it to the village manager, I've had discussions with everybody on the board as far as the reimbursements. So, I just wanted to know if you guys could go ahead and reimburse that total back of what we had to pay on those fields, which was eighty, eight thousand, six hundred dollars. Thank you to village manager, she did reach out, and she was able to provide us compensation for a smaller portion of it, so I appreciate her for getting in, jumping in and doing that. But we still need back the total reimbursement of what we did, basically, village's job. So, um... So that's who we're waiting on, a decision on that.
Thank you very much, Ms. Walker. Yes, yes, sir.
Uh-huh. I got it, I got it too, right? I'm gonna have to email it to you.
Um, Robin, I just wanna say, first of all, that you did address this to me as well. I'm just gonna give you my position as this, is that I know DPW have been understaffed, and when it comes to those fields, that the village had the responsibility in the first place to make sure that our children had a place to play baseball. So if there is a reimbursement, my position is, I feel you should be made whole. If you all had to do it in circumstances, especially the way DPW is stressed at this point, if I'm not mistaken, we were down to about five. It's, it's not like it was ten years ago, when we had a DPW and a parking rep. Parking rep had their own department with four or five workers, and then not only that, but let me also include that there were DPW guys that did it on their own time, being Eugene Lawson, who has passed away, Darrell Byers, the wellers, those others. So if this had taken place, my position is you should be made whole of it, and I believe that is something that maybe this board and the village manager, we can have a further discussion about, because it should have been done. I know that we were up at Farm, Regal Farm, trying to get it done with the H&R Block next door, and even then, it should have been further along than what we did up there ourselves as volunteers. So my position is, is that the baseball should be made whole, and I will discuss further about it, because I did see the agreement that was a rough draft here for the board members to discuss tonight. I yield my time, Mr. Mayor.
Um, thank you, Ms. Walker, for coming out tonight and explaining where we're at with the baseball organization. Also, you know, I have several questions and references, well, not several, several questions and references, and this is to the baseball organization and the way it's being treated. My question to the board is, we, we have to beg, please, to get things done for the baseball organization, and that's unacceptable when it comes to the children in this community. The children come first. We need to do this with impartiality and neutrality when it comes down to our children, and stop making a difference when it comes to the different youth programs. We see support for other programs in our community, but not baseball. So I am just trying to understand, when are we gonna receive our funding back for what we gave in good faith? We want it returned in good faith. I yield my time.
Thank you, trustee. Anyone else have comments?
Yes, Mayor, may I speak? I just wanted to confirm, Ms. Robin, the amount of that check that you received today. Can you state the amount, just for the record, please?
It was one thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. Okay. So that, basically, on that portion that I sent you guys, that basically took care of the T-ball registration, so we would just need the money back for the field renovations itself. All right, thank you.
Very good. All right, Mr. Sebby.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees, Village Manager, all of the attendants.
You'll allow Kate, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees, Village Manager, everyone in attendance. I'm gonna try to address three issues with a long question. One of them is a discussion of the ordinance for increasing compensation to elected officials.
Please speak up, sir.
One of them would be the discussion of the ordinance increasing the compensation of elected officials, or talk about the park district situation, and I want to talk about the ordinance moving code enforcement from under the pre-perpet of the fire department to the village manager. I know one thing I wanna do is, I worked hard all my life while I worked here, while I have to work, while I live in University Park, and my goal is to retire, but not have to spend more dollars in retirement and taxes than I am currently spending now. When you're talking, you all are leaders, you all hopefully have been a manager of positions before, and you do understand, when you're talking about, you know, massive increases like you're talking about, that means that you've done a self-evaluation, and you shared that self-evaluation. So let's just talk about some of the things that some of the residents evaluate. We talk about transparency. I want you to ask yourself, this is a question, this is gonna be a question, I think, do you feel you as a board has been transparent to us, the residents? When I say transparent, let's talk about financial responsibility here in this village. We get no financial information. The artists that we have got are three years old, and in those artists, they talk about us being in debt, sixteen, I should say debt, I should be sixteen million dollars in the hole, or the red, in addition to being over twenty million dollars of liability debt. I have not, I need you to ask yourself, what have you done as a board to help reduce those type of numbers, so that we continue to move forward? They have ongoing concern in those artists, which are not unqualified opinions, they are qualified artists, which are not the best artists that we need to be getting here at the village, which is what is stagnating our ability to get new funding and other things. Let's talk about approved budgets. It's amazing to me how we keep adding and adding and adding and adding. We have no group budgets out here, we have no budgets that have been shared with the residents, we have nothing to do in comparison with, but we're creating positions like this, trying to increase salaries like that. But the problem is, is the tax dollars to cover that, or the other revenues that can help subsidize those costs, have not been brought in. I don't believe that this board knows something we don't know, which could be possible, because information is not being shared, shared with us. In terms of, let's talk about our children in our community. We wanna bring in a park district. Once again, are we willing to bring in a park district to increase our tax dollars that we have to pay, as opposed to getting activities that are beneficial for everybody as a whole? From the standpoint, a park district is only going to increase our tax dollars, it's not going to reduce it, it's gonna transfer some responsibility, but it's not gonna transfer any dollars. So we need to, we need to see what we can do about that. In terms of road projects, come on now, we understand that it takes time for the government to get dollars here, and other programs to get dollars here, is that it?
Yeah, that's it. You can engage during when we get to that session and, and the meeting.
Okay, that's fine.
We can take you to the conversation.
All right, that's fine, thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Katrina Jones.
I don't have time.
Okay, no comment. Mary Trust.
Okay. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Mary Trust. I'm a forty-eighth year resident of this community. Now, I want the records, let's let the records show that this resident is very, very disappointed with this board. I don't know how, in God's name, that you can sit here and consider giving yourself a raise, when you don't adequately use the money that the taxpayers are giving you to soothe their satisfaction. You act like they don't exist, they're not important, and the children in this town, they are like the garbage. You do not care. For that young lady to stand up here and be asking for money is ridiculous. I have never seen anything like this in my life. I mean, this is ridiculous. I am ashamed. I was so proud to be with my son, who was a product of this village, and got this training here, and he's passing it on to someone else. And Rantoul has one of the most outstanding communities that you, and they have a good, good area, excellent, for everybody to come and play in it. This is, uh, this is ridiculous, and they're begging you for money, and you have the audacity to ask for a raise. We cannot pay your mortgages, we cannot pay your car payments, I'm sorry that we have people who serve on these committees and get no pay. You would just have to tuck it and say it just like I do. Now, I don't wanna have to get out here in this street and demonstrate against you with my bad leg that I've been knee that I've been in PT for the last two months, two times a week, but this has got to stop. You're taking vacations all over the creation with the little money that we give you. It's gotta stop. Every time I look around, you're on a vacation. And if you think I stood up in front of your house and demonstrated before, I'll do it again. There's no problem. I'm a senior citizen. We got disposable time. So stop it, stop it. You still have not paid Amazon, and I talk, you know I'm all around with all these other communities, they getting money back and all this kinda crap, I tuck my tail and walk away. I'm embarrassed. I'm embarrassed. Cut it out. This is a managerial type of government. Now, I put, I pulled off my suit years ago, do I have to come back? And I know my time may be up, but June 1st is keep always ringing in my head. June 1st, do you all know what that is? That's the day that taxes due.
That's it, this is just... All right. Thank you very much.
All right.
Sandra Hurd.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sandra Hurd. I, for those of you who may not know, I am the Township Assessor. I've also been a member of this community for twenty-two years, I don't get, and been involved in functions like Finance Committee and so forth. I've been a while since I've been here, because I've been really busy, but I thought today I need to take some time and come and speak on some things. First, I wanna say thank you. I do see some improvement in this village, woo-hoo, finally, but I say we still have a far to go, to get things where they should be, so that everybody's proud and not ashamed. But I, I say there are some improvements. But I have some questions on the ordinance, the discussing the increase of the compensation. My first question is, what is the justification for? Has there been new responsibilities added to the board members? And where are the funds gonna come from for this? As David just mentioned, millions of dollars we are in, and I know it's been like that for years, as long as I was on the Finance Committee. Are we managing, we are a management form of government, manager form of government, so are we trying to switch the roles, so that the board members are doing some of the functions that the manager should be doing? I just don't get the justification for that. We are a small community, and we have to keep our expenses in the line of what we can expect the taxpayers to be able to afford to pay. And it's been that way for years. I, I can't see doubling it just all of a sudden like that, makes no sense to me. Item number five, one D, it says that we're gonna be terminating a contract and picking up a new one, and my question is, do we get any bids on that to make that decision? And will there be any cost savings? Just wondering.
Which is that, Mrs. Hurd?
Huh?
Which one is that?
Uh, five, one D, uh-huh.
Okay.
And then the, the next one, five, one F, um, I'm sorry. Uh, yeah, were you changing the special events fund to project fund? That seems like a very general title, project fund. Could that cover, if it cover a vast number of things? Will there be a specific definition or a description of what that fund's supposed to entail? Why are we making the change? Okay, what's gonna be expected? Are there gonna be improved results by changing the name? Or has this, are there gonna be more transparency? I'd like to know. I say that if it's been, if it hasn't been in transparency in the past, change the name won't do that. And then, of course, will there be any improvements by changing the name? My question again is interest in the Finance Committee as a former Finance Committee member, and when I was removed off of the committee, I, one thing I said is I would still participate, but it seems like they don't meet right now, so I'm asking.
Mrs. Hurd, is that, that three minutes is up?
Okay, one more thing.
Listen, I have to address everybody who's involved.
Just, just wanna know, who do I need to speak to, the primary person, to get answers to these questions?
Well, you can speak to the manager, you can speak to myself, you can speak to any board member, and we can continue this dialogue when we get to those, uh...
Okay. No problem.
We can just, you know, have an open discussion at the line.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Mrs. Lawson.
Good evening, Mayor and Board, and I'd like to say thank you to Brother Randall White. He must be gone, but prayer is definitely the order of the day for our community, so we are not without need of prayer. I wanna say welcome to Ms. Scott, Village Manager Scott, I've had the opportunity to meet with. I think it was a, a good person to put in the position, just the wrong process of doing it. I think we need to watch the way that we do business, and there's a certain way that things are done, and we should do them decently and in order. There's an order to things, and when we don't have order, what's the other thing we have? Chaos. So, we are experiencing some chaos right now, with the board wanting a raise. I have the same questions the Assessor has. Where's that money coming from? Why do you think you deserve a raise? What have you done for me lately? Some of these things can fall in the order of what I would call UP, let me digress here and say welcome to Mr. Matt Stacy, who I've had the pleasure of speaking with and getting some conversation out there and some things done. Thank you, Mr. Stacy. Let me go on to say, in the, in the, using the term of UP financially unstable, financially unstable. When you are financially unstable, you don't keep spending money. We don't have any money. At least, that's your transparency to us, that there's no money. Let me go on, because there's an impact of corruption on our community. Local governments should restore hope and bring confidence. There's a sense of uncaring. The trustees don't respond, they don't communicate, they don't take residents serious. I spoke with a trustee who had no idea about the process of hiring a village manager, and no one even talked to her about it, and she said, "I don't know." Come on, this culture of don't care, non-responsive from residents, has to change, and as long as we sit silent, we can expect corruption and violence, because your silence is violence on our community. And this is not a democracy that I envision. I got a lot more to say in the committee of the whole. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Deborah J. Stroud, that will be our last public comment, you can get into the meeting.
Good evening, Board, those present and those viewing. I stand before you today so I can mention something that is very, very, very heavy on my heart annually, and that is registering people to vote. I'm in my twenty-fifth year in this community as a deputy registrar, with the pleasure of being able to definitely register seventeen, eighteen-year-olds, seventeen-year-olds right now, I'm sorry, that can vote after their birthday for November and April elections. This'll be my tenth year at Crete Monique High School, registering some of those young folks, because to me, I'm sorry, I'm trying to, I'm not the witness, I'm sorry, I'm trying to raise up to air. Thank you. I'm sure, what can I say? Okay, I look at those seventeen, eighteen-year-olds, they are our future. They will be replacing all of us in this room at some point in time in our lives. Yes, I'm blessed to have lived in this community forty-nine years, but I won't be here forever. So, I'm asking, Manager Scott, you're new to my getting up at the podium, speaking about voter registration. I have a list of the locations I will be registering between now and October 8th, between Crete Monique High School, Thornwood House, and University Park Library. May I give this list to you?
Yes, ma'am, and I'd like to mention that today is National Voters Registration Day. Hi. Yes, you can give that to me, and I'll make sure it's posted.
Okay, I've got a separate list for Liva as well, if I wanted to keep one as also. So for the parents and the grandparents that are out there, for anyone in that household that is seventeen or eighteen-year-old, I will publicly proudly give my phone number, one, seven, zero, eight, two, five, seven, six, one, seven, nine. Call me, I will do a one-on-one appointment with you. The times that I'll be at these locations may not fit in your schedule, but my little car will go anywhere in the state of Illinois to register anybody, as long as they got the two credentials.
Seventeen-year-olds right now, I'm sorry, that can vote after their birthday for November and April elections. This'll be my tenth year at Crete Monique High School, registering some of those young folks. Because to me, I'm sorry, I'm trying to, I'm not aware of this, I'm sorry. I'm trying to raise up to air. Thank you. I'm sure, what can I say? Okay, uh, I look at those seventeen, eighteen-year-olds, they are our future. They will be replacing all of us in this room at some point in time in our lives. Yes, I'm blessed to have lived in this community forty-nine years, but I won't be here forever. So, I'm asking, Manager Scott, you're new to my getting up at the podium speaking about voter registration. I have a list of the locations I will be registering between now and October eighth, uh, between Crete Monique High School, Thornwood House, and University Park Library. May I give this list to you?
Yes, ma'am, and I'd like to mention that today is National Voters Registration Day. Hi. Yes, you can give that to me and I'll make sure it's posted.
O- okay, I've got a separate list for Liva as well, if I wanted to keep one as also. So, for the parents and the grandparents that are out there, for anyone in that household that is seventeen or eighteen-year-old, I will publicly proudly give my phone number, one-seven-zero-eight-two-five-seven-six-one-seven-nine. Call me, I will do a one-on-one appointment with you. The times that I'll be at these locations may not fit in your schedule, but my little car will go anywhere in the state of Illinois to register anybody. As long as they got the two credentials that the state says they need to have. So, thank you for your time. Uh, please, please, get any and everyone you know to register to vote, and to vote. Thank you.
What's that number again?
Those are the digits, call me. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Stroud. Thank you very much. Okay, and here we are, item number one, we're going to have a, I was told it's going to be a ten-minute to twelve-minute presentation. So, item five-one-A is a presentation to CMAP Municipal Pavement Management Program.
Thank you for having us this evening. CMAP, I'm Jose Rodriguez, Project Manager for the Pavement, um, Management Plan, um, Velcro Pro-Way. Back in two thousand and eighteen, we commenced with a goal for projects to be able to offer, um, services that would, um, collect pavement data and evaluate the existing condition of a local street network. Um, we got interest from sixty-nine communities over the past, over the next four years up to today. We've serviced seventy-five communities and helped them develop final plans. And several of them, to varying degrees, have taken our recommendation, our vendor's recommendation. We have Joe Stefanski of ARA, um, who'll explain the process in more detail and also, um, present the specific findings with regard to the Village of University Park's, um, pavement system.
Mr. Stefanski?
Uh, so, we're glad of, um, had you, um, University Park be a participant, along with several other, um, Will County and South, our South suburban communities. Um, so I'll now turn it over to Joe, and he will begin the presentation. Oh, and let me add, let me add, this was free of charge, a service that we provided to the community.
Very good. Uh, thank you, Mayor, thank you to the Board for this opportunity. Uh, as Jose said, my name is Joe Stefanski. It prioritizes keeping our good roads in good condition through the use of preservation activities and starting early in a pavement's life. This is opposed to that worst-first approach where we work on the worst roads at any given time. So we look at that example performance model graph in the middle of the slide there. Uh, one of the reasons we use benefit costs is because we see a nonlinear relationship of a pavement's deterioration over time. So in the middle of the life of a pavement, we get cracking that propagates across the surface of our pavement. Water gets damaged, those cracks. In the springtime, we get freeze thaw, that's accelerated damage, that's that roller coaster ride you can see there. So we want to stop that roller coaster ride, or at least slow it down. We want to do something on that pavement before we go down that roller coaster ride. Lesser, lesser expensive, lighter treatments while that pavement is still in good condition. So we start with data collection. Uh, for this project, we use a laser crack measurement system, or LCMS, you can see there in the pictures. Uh, that laser information is processed to identify the location, severity, as well as type of crack. And ultimately, we aggregate that information into a pavement rating. Uh, the process is automated, uh, with some QC, so we're able to do a hundred percent survey coverage of what we drive over. Uh, for this project, CMAP chose PCI, or Payment Condition Index, uh, for the pavement ratings. Uh, PCI is a well-known national ASKM standard. Um, PCI ranges from zero to a hundred, and the pictures on the next few slides will give you some ideas of, uh, conditions, um, your roads, as well as just touching on the type of treatments for those ranges of roads. So, starting with new pavement from that ninety to a hundred PCI range, um, you're not doing too much there, but you work your way down into the eighties and seventies. This is where we want to use crack sealing, or maybe some light patching. Once we drop below that, into the eighties and seventies, or I'm sorry, into the sixties and fifties, this is indicative of that, where we're at that top of that roller coaster ride. We want to do some light overlays, thin overlays, less expensive treatments. Um, you know, again, to slow down that roller coaster ride, prevent it as long as possible, because once we go down that, we're going to lose a lot of health underneath that surface of the pavement. Once we've dropped below that, into the forties and on down, we've likely already lost that structural integrity below the pavement surface. That freeze thaw has created those, everybody sees the hot holes in the springtime. At that point, you really can't protect this pavement section with a lighter, less expensive treatment. You really need to slot it in for major rehab. So at this point, we're in that hot hole proactive repair every year, keep that road safe for another year, and hopefully slot it in for that needed, uh, major rehabilitation in the following year. Uh, here is an example of some of the information that we're collecting. The right-of-the-way pictures there on the left, uh, are taken every twenty feet. And the laser information you can see there on the right, it looks like pictures with drawings on them, but those are actually laser information. Um, and, uh, you can see the automated information overlaid on the images, uh, showing the location of the cracks, the type of cracks, all that's fed into the, uh, pavement rating. And all that information was, uh, tran, uh, given to the Village on a hard drive with a spreadsheet to help navigate all those images. Uh, here are the condition assessment results for the Village. The average PCI was about a fifty-two. Uh, you can see there's a lot of red roads percentage-wise in the Village, but there's also a lot of green roads, too. Um, this is actually pretty typical, that PCI rating around fifty to sixty. Um, so you guys are pretty similar to what we see on average in the, in the region. Um, and what we think the, the plan that the Village is putting together here will, can and will improve on that average as well. So we take that condition information that we use, that we assess, uh, and we put it into a pavement management software. Uh, for this project, CMAP chose Paver, it's a nationally recognized pavement management software. Uh, we, uh, CMAP also provided the Village a one-year license for the software, it doesn't expire. There's no annual fee, uh, except for tech, technical support or future software upgrades, so the Village can use that software. Uh, and CMAP also provided software training, which we led for all the participating agencies. And an extra thank you to the Village and Ms. E for hosting the training right here in this room. So, we spent a couple days, uh, in June, early June, uh, training people on that software. And, uh, yeah, thank you to the Village for hosting, and, uh, it was a, a good experience for them. So some details on the, uh, inputs of the software. Uh, I showed the example performance model earlier in the presentation. Um, so this, these are the actual performance models for your village. Uh, asphalt surface roads on the left, concrete surface roads on the right. This is how the software predicts future performance on your network on a given road, if there's no work recommended by the analysis. You can see we plotted all the points with the condition versus the age. We ran a regression best fit line, that is your prediction of future performance. And we programmed that into the analysis. Uh, we also programmed the budget information, uh, providing the expected spending level over the ten years, uh, for the ten-year analysis. And you can also see that we did, uh, uh, put in money for preventive maintenance, so basically a portion of that annual budget that we are retaining, uh, for, to keep your good roads in good condition. That amount is a lot smaller than the major rehabilitation budget, because it is cheaper to keep good roads, uh, in good condition versus having to bring those really poor roads back up to good. And then lastly, uh, here is the, how, how the treatments are chosen in the software. Uh, this is for your asphalt roads, uh, including, uh, how we set the PCI thresholds, so the pavement rating thresholds, where, uh, certain treatments are, uh, feasible. Um, you can see we're also including preventive maintenance here. So again, if it's, if the rating is better than a certain level, we say, hey, this is a good pavement, and let's assign treatments that keep that pavement in good condition longer. And then this is for the concrete roads, a little simpler, but still important to, uh, set. So for the analysis, we ran multiple budget scenarios. First, the current budget, a- as well as others that are budget-driven, so increasing or decreasing from the expected, uh, as well as scenarios that are target-driven. So say we want to maintain that average PCI of fifty-two, uh, or if we want to increase to, say, a PCI of sixty over ten years, how much does that cost us? Uh, that chart on the left, it's just the funding for scenario, just giving a, a visual of the different, uh, levels of funding for each of the scenarios we ran. Uh, the chart on the right is how much was desired by each scenario for the major rehabilitation project. So, that chart on the right, basically the higher that line goes for a given scenario, the more feasible or recommended projects that were left on the table. And lastly, with each of the scenarios comes that predicted pavement condition over the analysis period. So you can compare, especially what we like to compare is that maintained current funding line with the maintained current condition line. We want to see if, do those diverge over time during the analysis period? And if so, like, like we do see here, uh, that would suggest that we have an underfunded roadway program and that over time, we would expect the roadway network to deteriorate without additional funding. Again, the results, similar results, uh, for each scenario, this time in a table format. Um, those last few columns kind of tell the picture, I apologize, it's a little small here. Um, but this table emphasizes the, basically the moral of this, moral of the story is that aggressive spending sooner or earlier, um, over time will yield a better PCI or pavement rating over time for less money. So some of those scenario budget numbers, you know, they're, they're a little daunting. They are showing that it's an underfunded, uh, situation. Um, but we think that there are a lot of benefits of creating this plan that the Village can use, uh, when they're looking for additional roadway funding. Uh, the findings of the project, first off, are independently gathered, objectively gathered, um, and they really provide a justification that the Village can use, um, for going out and looking for that additional funding. And on the right side there, federal, state grants, bonds, there's a lot of additional, um, ways that the Village can look for money, um, to try to defund those needed, uh, roadway projects. And here is the major M&R program, uh, plan. This is for that current or expected funding level. So over the ten years, this is where the program is saying, do work. Uh, that map there is color-coded by year, um, the, basically the where and the whens on that map. You can see the chart on the right, we're balancing that budget to provide the expected funding level over the analysis period. Um, but because different treatments are recommended, um, there's also, the darker blue bar is showing the, uh, number of miles that we're getting each year, doesn't exactly track to the, uh, to the budget. Um, we're using, you know, many different treatments, and those treatments have their own unit cost. And all this information, everything, uh, in the system, all the scenarios that we ran, um, was provided to the Village, uh, the database was provided. So with that training that we, um, held right here in this room, and with that database, all these scenarios, this analysis can be rerun in the future. Each year, you can go in the software, kind of lock in what was done in the year before, and you can push out that analysis, push out the recommendations one additional year each, each year that you update the program. And again, here, we're just looking at diving in, uh, trying to see the, the percentage of the network for each of the years of the scenario. Um, you know, how is the network changing over time that we're predicting it to change with the current budget? And the moral of the story here is, by the end of that ten-year analysis, we see a lot of, uh, roads in that lowest category. Um, we're just not able to maintain, uh, the network with that expected budget level. Again, this is, uh, you know, consistent with that narrative that in our analysis, we're seeing an under, underfunded roadway program, uh, with the current funding level. So to preface, this is, uh, these numbers, these numbers here are not, uh, from the Village, they are just samples of what do we get from doing all this pavement management? Uh, what we've found, by using pavement management techniques, an agency can save money and make the pavements last longer. The goal is to stop using that worst-first approach, like is on that top graph, where we wait till the road gets in really bad condition, we do something really major to that road to bring it back up to perfect. The goal is to use that bottom graph, where we do things little by little, that pavement is aging. Um, we don't wait until it gets really bad, take care of that pavement, just like we brush our teeth, put oil in our cars. Want to use more proactive treatments when things are running smoothly. And ultimately, this will yield, uh, the best bang for your buck, uh, and make best use of taxpayer dollars. Uh, in addition to the future pro, uh, proactive analysis planning that we've been talking about, uh, Paver will also use the distresses that were captured in the inspection to directly estimate, uh, the amount of maintenance, uh, and the consequence or the benefit of doing that maintenance as well. And this information can be really useful for planning as well as cost estimating. Uh, so get this information to your engineers, and that will be useful to them. And a map of that, uh, maintenance plan. But again, uh, this is directly from the distresses that we captured, so you only get this in years that you do inspection of the road. And then finally, some takeaways from the project. Increase the use, uh, maintain and increase the use of pavement preservation activities, crack sealing, patching, uh, thin overlays. Keep your pavement management system updated regularly, go into the software, enter what was done, project out that plan one extra year. Uh, consider adding structural analysis, so we can see what is the layer, uh, the health of those underlying layers of our pavement that we can't see. Uh, and then lastly, we do know the accuracy of our predictions does evolve over time, so we do recommend performing a pavement condition inspection every three to five years or so. If you do all these things, we believe it will support healthy pavement management program for the Village. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. That's very important. Are there any questions?
Yeah.
Mr. Serrié?
All right, uh, I, you talk about, uh, the, my, my concern is this, you've done a lot of patchwork.
Hold tight, David, hold tight, because everybody needs to be in here.
Uh, we understand that you've done a lot of patchwork, but from this standpoint, knowing that our infrastructure, the piping, the underground, is over fifty years old, which is why we have a lot of main, main breaks, uh, doesn't make a lot of sense for us to take these dollars and spend on trying to put patches over work. It needs to be done underground. Uh, from that standpoint, you already basically, basically said that we didn't have enough in the building. We were already under, underwater from that standpoint. So was the focus to fix the infrastructure before we really start burning money on roads that didn't even have sinkholes, like we continuously have here on University Parkway? You go past that stop sign, you know, the infrastructure is always fifty years old. And no matter how much patchwork you put on that, eventually, it's going to spring a leak. That's why we're getting a lot of leaks throughout town, because infrastructure is there. So is it worth us really putting money into a road project based on the structure of the, of the town?
I would say that the answer to that is that we should be working on the, you know, the lowest part problem on the roadway first. Because if you fix what's on top and something's wrong underneath, you know, your foundation is, is what matters.
And just, and there's a sample, say, Avenue and Amherst Lane, those streets have not been touched since nineteen eighty-two. So there's major reconstruction, those roads are getting ready to cost us a couple of million dollars. They need to get done, and they're going to get done. But that's some of the problems that we have, is the sewer systems, everything underneath. It's not a typical overlay, and I'm just learning a whole lot about it in depth now, but it's not just like we did Farmview Road where we were able to scrape it and repave. This has, it's almost like a surgery going inside of a body, because there's such deep things underneath the sewer system. Those sewers don't belong to the Village, they belong to Aqua Water. So there's a, there's another collaboration, there's another part that, that plays in there. So, those are some of the challenges that we have. part that plays in there. So those are some of the challenges that we have, where we have not had a plan or a program where we can look and say, we can budget this, that, we know that these streets are gonna get done this year, these streets will get done the following year. So this is, that's why this is important, because it's been negligent for so long, but now we're trying to address those things. It's been all overdue. And Abbott Lane, we're gonna get that done, and we should go out soon, if it's not out. Has it been let out, Ms. E?
No, it hasn't been let out.
Sir, have you observed Abbott and Amherst? Have you been on Abbott and Amherst?
I did virtually drive those roads and...
Have you evaluated, sir?
We did.
Okay, and can you give an estimated price of that being taken, those two streets being done? Because I'm wondering, but, go ahead.
I guess I'm not, I don't have the prices off the top of my head, but it was important and it is not a road that you could do a small, big sum.
Did you give the village an estimated cost?
Yes, that is in the software, yep.
It's in the software?
Yes.
I wonder if I can have a copy of that software?
Certainly, the plan from the software.
Another reason why I ask that is because you got this teeny tiny writing, "I'm 68." You know, you understand what I'm saying. I can't see that writing, it's blurred, can't comprehend, because I'm listening to you and trying to watch everything. You got these little bit of figures and all that, shoot, right over my head. I don't understand that. I need to take it and read it and try and comprehend. How can I get that?
I can email it to the village manager or...
Yeah.
Yep. And that information is in our report.
Can I get it from you?
Yeah, I'm fine emailing it to you, sure.
I'm asking...
I can give you my email. Am I okay to email it to anybody?
And I don't need Ms. E. putting her tooth set in. I'm the village manager no more.
I'm doing this project as director.
But I'm talking to, I'm talking to this gentleman, that's who I'm talking to. I'm talking, I'm talking to this gentleman.
That's not be confrontational, that's not be confrontational. Okay, I should just call anyone.
Well, I want you to say the information that this gentleman did a...
That wouldn't be advisable.
...presentation or workshop with, we don't know what he tried to say, what Ms. E. told him. I need to see it for myself, so I don't have to... I need to sit in with the village manager's say, but in regards to getting the tax bill.
Well, there's the presentation, and then there's the report. And I believe the report is public.
So may I interject, just for some clarity? So let me first start off by saying, I'm actually familiar with this program?
But I'm not.
Wait, I understand that. If I could just finish, please, Ms. Morgan.
Yes.
So I'm familiar with this. There are licensing requirements, am I correct? And that it's not, so there's training for this, let me say this, there's technical training for the use of it. However, as far as the presentation and the actual slides, absolutely, but the actual software itself, you have to be licensed, and there's technical training. And that you can't just, there's a certain number of names that are on that, and it's pretty much relegated to...
I'm interested in what was just...
No, absolutely this, I can provide for you.
I do too.
Yes, I can provide that for you. The other thing that I wanted to mention that I thought was really good about this that wasn't listed there, that I just know from just experience, is that sometimes you'll have, when you go to pave streets, they'll be arguing, you know, among whether it's the residents and the board, "Well, how did you pick that street?" "Oh, you're showing favoritism because somebody lives on that street." So with this software, it's strictly subjective, it's an X-ray kind of machine, if I had to liken it, it's like an X-ray that sits on this car, it drives all throughout town, so it gives back a true survey, and it's not someone's personal opinion, it's not, it comes straight from the software, from the machine, from doing the X-ray, and it'll just tell you and determine how deep you have to go, if it needs to be completely resurfaced. It'll give you almost like a life expectancy, if you will, of the road. So I just wanted to add that, that clarification, but as far as that, absolutely, you can get it from me, okay?
I just want to add also, I was a little bit disturbed, and I think this is what came out, with the mayor saying, because I know him, and he talked, and he said a couple of million dollars, when he knows that we all know that in the Moles account, there's over $2 million, and because of now we're trying to figure out ways to move the money, remember that talk we had, Mayor, I asked you, how are you gonna move that money? How are you gonna take that money out of the Moles account? So that's, when he gets up and he starts talking, like he works with him, that it's $2 million, it's about $2 million to do, poor trustee Bolden, I mean, she lives right on that street and didn't say nothing about her residents, constituents getting a new street, when Farmview, and that's what they play with, old favoritism, favoritism with Farmview.
Okay, well, I just wanted to clarify that and give just, you know, some more context to, to that conversation as far as that goes.
That's what we mean.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
We appreciate that.
We've got a couple of questions.
My thing goes, you all into asphalt. More than how Chicago weather affects asphalt, and asphalt requires a lot more maintenance, do you, why are you all considering using asphalt to fix the streets?
There's a trade-off, there's no right or wrong answer to that question. Asphalt is cheaper in the short run, concrete is more expensive in the short run, but typically has a better, you know, longer life. But the downside with concrete is that when it goes, it goes very quickly, whereas asphalt, you see it, you know, there's a slower deterioration. It gets worse.
I have a question. Mrs. Drabb?
How soon can we get started on, my name is Flagpole, to the mayor, the board, how soon can we get started? We're saying what needs to be done, we know what needs to be done, and I heard someone say, it hasn't been bid out yet, but I'm hearing that it's gonna be done by the end of the year. How would that happen if it's not bid out?
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Things not being done, what was that about, or you said, "decently..."
So I think I might have missed the first part. The question I had was, were you guys gonna be repaving everything and then doing analysis afterwards, or are we talking just, this is a way to assess them as we go?
I just, so let me just be clear, this is not, they're not paving anything. This is simply software to identify the worst streets. It's not, it doesn't mean that we're gonna pave anything, and they're not, they're not even in charge of that. This is simply a software to be able to assess the streets on a long-term level and to be able to see things that need to be done in upcoming years, and it's more subjective.
So this is just strictly assessment only?
Yes, it's just assessment.
And, wait a minute, and then the other, the other question I have is, what, what is the cost gonna be for this assessment? Just overall, yearly, what are we gonna be paying yearly for this assessment? Free?
On the assessment, it's funded.
Okay.
This was funded through C-MAP.
Okay. So we're not talking about your own street value?
My question is, since it was mentioned that we do have crumbling infrastructure, and that is something that may be addressed on certain roads, I don't know, I didn't get that your software does any kind of analysis on that. So my question is, will that be something that the village is gonna be also doing currently? Because there are some roads that probably need some under, under the surface stuff down before you would do the top stuff. Is there any plans for that? The village, I'm asking.
I will say there's beginning conversations. Let me say, I just got here July 20th, but there are beginning conversations as far as infrastructure, things of that nature. We're looking at grants, I'm specifically been looking at grants and trying to plan ahead for the future. Part of that is also reviewing the budget and reallocating money, and looking over to see what's feasible, what grants are available, those types of things. So I'm not gonna rush and make assumptions or make promises that can't be delivered. I'm telling you what we're doing.
And as the mayor mentioned, that those are mostly owned by Aqua, is there any plans of collaborating with them in any way?
So there's pending litigation, as I'm sure everyone's aware, so I, I'm not, I don't want to say the wrong thing to jeopardize things for this community. Let me be clear about that. I'm trying to be transparent, but at the same time, I have to protect this village. So there's certain things that I'm just not gonna, you know, elaborate on as it pertains to Aqua, but I will say that I have had conversation, we have had conversations since I've been here, more than one conversation with Aqua in regards to certain things as it pertains to infrastructure and, and the water.
Yes, my question, I understand this is somewhat, like you said, introduction for the software in order to assess and evaluate.
The direction.
Is that true?
That being the case, whenever...
It gets to a level or a stage, once the work starts...
I'm asking, as a resident on Amherst, if there can be an inclusion to possibly...
The locating also. I can't do anything.
I'm asking, as a resident on Amherst, I live in a cul-de-sac area where it's like speed race, coming back and forth.
Constantly, yeah.
Anybody, anybody that is going down Amherst, you get to the cul-de-sac, it's like anybody hundred. So I'm asking, not just on Amherst, but any other street, perhaps including the top lot areas, just like we have down Black Hawk by the school, can that be an inclusion when the surfacing is actually to get it?
So to answer your question, that's completely a possibility and plausible. I'm not sure exactly where they would be placed on Amherst, but I will tell you that that's something that we can definitely look into.
You can put a ride in front of my house.
And believe it or not, I have had some residents tell me that they do not want speed lines on their block. I've had people, and it's true, I've had people say that they want them, and on the same block, a resident a few doors down told me they don't want them. So, yeah, so, you know, but I'm, we're totally open to looking into that.
I can respect those residents that don't want it, I'm one of them that does. I hope that that is respected. I'd like to be able to get in and out of the driveway without the concern of, of my car, I really don't.
Understood.
So I'm just asking for it to be a possible inclusion.
Understood.
So this is just in the beginning stage, right? Did I understand it correctly? This is just the evaluation stage, so we don't have an idea of when the work is gonna start, right? No?
Oh, what, what's, go ahead, go ahead, Scott.
No, no, the reason I'm asking this question, because every time I see certain people, they go, "We're gonna get it done, we wish, we're starting right away, starting right away," and then I come here now and say, "This is just in the, more or less the discussion stage."
Right, we're kind of putting the... Which is? We put this part before the course, because there is structural work that needs to be done, we're just having fun right now talking about it, because nothing is about to be done. Because if it were, we would be talking about the structure. You have to have that structure in place first, so that whatever you're putting on top of it will hold. And right now, we have had no discussion about the structure, so we're just having fun. I liked your presentation. Who, who assigned you? C-MAP assigned you? You did a good job. Let's give them a "Aye."
Mrs. Mayor, may I be recognized? Is there any other questions in the audience?
Yeah, he wanted to know when, because I know the mayor just said, "It's gonna be done." We want to know a date on when those streets might be done.
So, okay. The mayor, do you have the floor to me, right? Okay. So, Mr. Mayor, I want to state with the point of the order of the agenda, which it is a resolution adopted for that report. But however, it is indeed a report, but the one thing that I want to bring to the first and foremost is that these roads have been a discussion for a very, very long time. I can remember in 2017, I said it under the previous chair that sat up here, that the day after my election in 2017, I rode down Abbott Lane and towed my truck a $400 job. Jim had to fix it. So it has been on the minds of many residents, and I think in the pockets of many residents, and they're pretty tired, and I don't blame them. This weekend, I had the opportunity to sit with some residents, and one, she lived on Greenbrier, and the first thing she said is that, "When are you gonna pave my street?" Every election, someone comes to my door and asks for my vote, but we don't pave the street. So I like what Ms. Scott said, because that was my solution, and is that is to reallocate the money, excuse me, that we're getting each year. But I want to stick on the point that prior to Ms. Scott, I know, when we were back on the Zoom calls, and I just, if, if, my colleague just, she reflected, I just, I did say this, I thought we had a bid out when we did Farmview, I thought we had a bid out, I was told we had a bid for Abbott Lane. And the numbers, I remember prior to 2019, the cost to repave everything was about $200,000, maybe, maybe a little bit more. Yeah, I'm just, look, I got the floor. I'm telling you, trustee Brooks, true. It was about 200, it was not, it was not anywhere in the neighborhood of $1 billion, like I was told when I asked, "How was it we did Farmview, but yet, and how we choose Farmview, but yet Abbott Lane and Amherst was not done?" So, right, so, yeah, so listen, this is a resolution to adopt this report. I just want to take a look and see what streets is on there, because this is how I feel at this point. They're on here? I didn't get... Is it?
Amherst and Abbott, a lot of them.
What, what number? Was that in the Dropbox, trustee? I didn't hear you. Somebody saying? Because I, I know what the... Okay. Because I don't have it in my Dropbox, but I'll check it, because Madam clerk always give it. And then too, partly because Durl has been trying to get mine, and that's another thing, just excuse us, because our equipment is going through a transition with a new company, so everything is so messed up. But I want to say that the report definitely, I want to just see who the streets are, and then top of that.
Go in your Dropbox.
Oh, it's in the Dropbox. I got that, but I didn't get anything else. Okay. But I want to keep in mind that we're gonna do something at this point. Okay. I'll just double check. But let me conclude, Mayor, by saying, bear in board, trustees, and general public, my position is that this is indeed a resolution, and I think everyone has a right to be angry at this point, because like I said, this weekend, thank you so much, this weekend, you know, I had residents, and like I said, the lady on Greenbrier, I told her that I would make mention to the board, that Ms. Mary is very upset, and she says she don't want another person coming to her door asking for a vote. And she says she don't want another person coming to her door asking for a vote if you can't get Greenbrier paved. It's, it's, and at this point, tonight is a resolution, we're accepting something, I'm looking here, and as I talk to you. Which, which, uh?
Always, always to the back.
Okay.
But remember, we don't have structure, we just having fun tonight. We just talking about it.
Right, and the solution, the solution. Yeah, the solution should be what Ms., and I, I will concur with what Ms. Scott has said, it's time for us to reallocate the money in the right direction so that these streets get done. Because if we can do Farm View that way, she wasn't here when it was done, she wanted here when this parking lot got done.
Go to page 46.
46. It was, but it was a solution. If we can do this parking lot and Farm View, we can do everything else. It's a little bit of sacrifice, and in my opinion, we go back to what we were doing, is that is sacrifice a little bit before we move forward. Mr. Mayor, you have my time, sir.
So it's 46 in the top top, so go all the way to the back of the page.
Once again, I'm not trying to tell anybody from our recommendation, you need to take the report that you just received, assess the condition of every road in town, and give the residents some type of temporary or some type of assessed timetable. Because you're stuck there telling Abbott that you're going to get theirs done, you may have an opportunity to get four or five streets done at the cost of Abbott, which may be more advantageous to the village as opposed to one street. So let's not give out false promises. Let's try to go back, take a look, break the stuff, get it out to the residents, so we have to know where they kind of look on the field. So you're going to be getting these questions at every meeting, because you prepared for them a list of the condition of the roads through town. It never helped to alleviate a lot of them. So I'm telling you what to do, just stop.
All right, David, thank you.
Yeah, listen.
Go ahead, trustee.
Yeah, I agree, Mayor. I just seen this, hey, Graham, look. I don't know if we can see, I couldn't see, that's why I got up and sat next to trustee Lewis. Ladies and gentlemen, almost every street is red or yellow. So I'm going to take it in a word of, I love my finest person when she tells me, trustee, we need to have a hard conversation. I think we need to have a hard conversation about these roads. Every road is almost red or yellow. Very few is, very few, the ones right here, and this is green, we just did it, common sense. So it's time, it's time to address.
Want it cheaper just to go ahead and get them all done?
Yeah, $50 million.
Right, right, David is right, that's about 60, yeah, we're talking over, we don't need help if we do that.
Engineers, when I did this survey, then it comes out that there was a major big construction on.
It was, so let me, let me also correct on that, Ms. E, yes, let me say this too.
All right, give me a second, trustee, trustee has the floor.
Yes, let me also say, the Madam Village Manager, Beck Fulham at the time, did emphasize the structural damage that was on Abbott and that was on Amherst. So, you know, at this point, I agree with, I heard it from the office, we need to have a serious conversation. And yes, it will cost 60, David is right, it will be 60 million just to do all of them. And right now, we don't have 60 million, you know. So thank you, trustee, for, because, yeah, this is all red, and I think this is something we need to have a conversation, but tonight is a resolution.
We just asked for it to move forward to the agenda.
That's it.
Just discussion.
That's what I'm saying, this is a, this is in reference to a resolution to discuss. So it's nothing. Exactly, so I just wanted to clarify that.
And CMAP is just, yeah. Those who do the analysis, basically everybody around the area, because it's like.
By managers, right?
Yeah, just like Ms. Scott says, it's like an X-ray.
Right, right.
And it tells you things in a minute time. Anything else?
I should have to do the same thing with the structure, I'm stuck on the structure. Because I don't understand how you're going to even start doing any paving without the structure.
It's not paving, it's not just paving, Ms. Lawson, it's completely reconstructing up for the whole roads. We all understand that. And that's what our engineers, yeah, it's not just coming in straight and putting in the road, absolutely not, no, absolutely not.
I'm looking at.
One second, Ms. Morgan, I'll see Ms. Walker first, and she had to head up here, I'll come back to you.
One question, are we still, because I'm not sure, are we still paying the golf course, are we still giving them like a hundred thousand, what are we paying them every month? No, that's a question I'm having, because, no, no, this is a serious question, because if we need funds, that's the first place it needs to come from.
Yeah, we have to pay them.
Can, can we stop that and do one road for a hundred thousand? We can do one road a month.
We, we can have that discussion like the manager said. The budget, the budget, there is some things that need to be reallocated. And also motions can be made for those things that, when they come to the time of, we have a budget hearing and so forth.
Mrs. Morgan?
I have to ask about this PCI. This PCI says Amherst and Abbott is in good condition. Wait, according to page 46, I heard somebody up there called about 46. Your street is in good condition, trustee, both. But I'm wondering, this, that's not what I need to read. That's why I'm asking questions. Trying to get a better understanding. It says good condition. Good condition.
CMAP condition index.
There is a listing of all the streets in this plan. What you do is look at the street and see how it's rated. It can be rated from zero to 100. The average of a street that's in good condition runs from 50 to 80. With just the opposite, village is just the opposite.
According to the information that the gentleman gave us. Yeah, just to add to that, according to the information that the gentleman gave us, I believe, unless I miss, 57 people said that our overall rating was between, PCI was between 50 and 60. So we're talking about overall within the village. So just going back to that, was Abbott rated good or bad, whatever, look like the whole overall condition is between 50 and 60. So that says like trustee Brooks was saying, this is a severe situation. So I don't know how we just kind of like break it up, somebody make me understand it. Okay, so, pardon me? Am I not making sense, because I need to explain myself a little bit more? Okay, so that's just really the bottom line to it all, it's going to have to be, have a thorough evaluation and assessment. Because between 50 and 60, like trustee Brooks was saying, that's yellow, red, whatever else, caution, stop, something, okay?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
We didn't move forward yet.
No, we're still on the same thing.
Okay, so, yeah, I just went through it, I see what Ms. Morgan is speaking about. So the PCI though, is it, is it simply, let's say, is it easy for the structure when they do or do the roads over, is that?
That's when everything is done, yeah.
Okay. Because, yeah, it kind of makes sense, because I'm looking at some of the streets here, I even said trustee Jenkins' court failed.
Yeah.
I just mentioned. Yeah, Greenbrier failed. So I think, yeah, so I think when we speak of Amherst, that it's, because like you can drive down it, but it's not like Greenbrier, but they would be able to do the construction. Right, so I just wanted to, some people would like things explained more in a simple term. And so from what I'm seeing with the green, and this is from Ms. Millie, the green, what you're seeing, Ms. Millie, is that the street is easier for them to work in repair compared to the ones you're seeing, like trustee Jenkins' street, it is in a grave, it failed. It shouldn't, no one should really be driving on it. It got ditches. Which one?
I'm interested in Abbott, because when they did, I'm stuck on this, you know, when they did Farm View.
Right.
We didn't understand why they did it. There was only a small part of Farm View that should have been done. All of us thought that your street should have been done, and you didn't say a word. Didn't say nothing.
Have I not been fighting for Amherst?
Absolutely. Amherst and Abbott, everything done. And you know, we got one, two, three, four, five votes, I'm sure, if you had talked with them, they would have said, ah, 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 ah. And they would have got your street done.
She, she did, she was told she was next. Yeah, she was told she was next.
And anybody else that go up and down that street. And also Amherst and Abbott, those two streets are the worst streets. They should have been the first street to be done.
Well, I thought they are three.
And the mayor says that it would be done.
Right.
I said, now wait, has it done?
One second, let me finish that guy, please. Go ahead, Ms. E.
First of all, in order to, we knew, we knew Abbott was extensive, street was extensive. There were, once we had an estimate and overview done, there were sinkholes, there were infrastructural problems, and it was clear that patching was not going to solve the problem. So we got an estimated cost, it exceeded $2 million, and I don't want to put it public because you'll be giving the information out to bidders. But the estimate exceeded $2 million. And we're talking about from over west to Black Hawk, all the way, all the way over east to the curve. But the point is, that street, and I know the people on there, there are some people coming out of their homes, are afraid that they would back up into those sinkholes. So we tried to do some simple asphalting, some payments to get it, but it exceeded $2 million. And we were building a fund to get that $2 million. And the dollars still that we have are in those funds. But it's going to depend on that bid process. It's going to depend on that bid, because it's so much money, the board had talked about phasing it. It was recommended by the engineer that we fast track it or phase it. If we phased it for this year with the estimate we get, phasing, if you know anything about, the plants closed their doors November 1, which means that prior to November 1, we would have had to complete a phase, and we complete, we couldn't open it back up until 2023 April 1. So we can complete the phase 1, but there's no way the entire street can be completed in one month, and that's all.
Mayor, I didn't see Nacky Road on here. Yeah, the reason why I definitely put Nacky Road is that, or I'm suggesting Nacky Road, if you ever drove down or Nacky Road from Western, I'm not saying West Street.
Yeah, that's, that's Western.
No, 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 no. Right, as you come in, apparently Creek or somebody put every, or this, this, everything or from this point beyond.
From Alstead going east to Nacky Road, that's where most of it.
Well, no, Nacky Road itself, I didn't see it on the list. So, I mean.
Oh, that's Love's Lane you're talking about.
Love's Lane, yes, from Love's Lane, all the way down to Old Voney Road, it says, yeah, the picture, they, they put, they posted a sign that this street is maintained by the Village University Park. Look, I know we wouldn't spend no money there, but I knew the Public Works Director, Biden was trying to put, fill those holes up now.
And it was cleaned up, trustee.
It was cleaned up, and it's messed up again. But my, my point is, is that, how can we, we do? How can we, actually, it's like Ms. E, Western in Harvey, that's what fears me, is the activity that's over there. However, how can we deal with that? Because that is a road where the farmers and people from Creek still use it. There are bird watchers over there, as silly as it sounds, you know, they even have their own pool over there, the birds. So can we, are we going to fill, or how are we going to fill, Ms. Scott, or if we ever do any, get rock, dirt, something that needs to fill, Nacky Road up? It's not here, but I think it's just something we need to address, because at the end of the day, Creek, you know, it's our road, you know, I'm just bringing it up, it's not, it's not.
And then you're talking about Central Avenue, you talk about Hamilton Avenue.
Uh, yes. Not all, not all, because I know that whatever on that south end, Old Voney.
It comes in.
As they come in, I notice whoever, the farmer, whoever owns that, he took care of that little piece. But as you go behind, back towards Love's Lane, it's all potholes, and then my point is, is that, say if we have a call back there, or our SUVs are not going to make that, that trip as bad as it is, you know. So I was just, I was just saying, I didn't see it on the list, but that's one street that they definitely said belongs to University Park, that maybe if the time comes, or if we have extra rock, extra gap, gravel, want to do something about it, I don't think they're back there, Ms. Scott, but it's something that I think is fixable, but I don't think we can put, we don't need to put any money into it. It's pass, I want, I want to see if we can make it pass.
And Dryly as well.
And you're also.
Dryly too.
Absolutely right, trustee, about Nacky Road. And we're going to all study this, and when we all get together again, we'll talk about it. But can we go to the next subject?
Yeah, so, yes, I, I, I'm going to grant, if we put this one in.
Does anyone else, she wanted to run the meeting, no, does any, does anyone else have anything to say about these streets, these roads?
I will say this, in regards to Nacky Road, I will get with the Director of Public Works, and we'll see what alternatives we can put down there, but I'm going to go over there with him, and we'll, we'll look at that.
And just for the record, we're getting a lot of calls from our industrial park partners, Joseph Court, Central, Nacky, Dryly, Hamilton. So, but you know, that's a good conversation that we're having, because we weren't doing roads for some time, so we wouldn't be having this conversation if we were, so it'd be good. Mrs. Morgan, just hold tight now, we're going to get to every item on the agenda, please. Let me run the meeting, okay? That's what I'm here for.
We need to go to conversation of elected officials, to increase.
Thank you, guys, you guys, you travel safe, crap, we're going to be going into the store.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item, we moved item F51B. We're going to move items, let's take the consensus of the vote, are we going to move item 51A to the director of agenda to make a resolution out of it, which is CMAP paving?
Yes.
That's going to move forward, that will be the general item. Okay, item 51B, we're going to just table that for right now?
Why?
I mean, why did y'all feel like y'all here?
Wait a second.
Point, point of order.
Item 51B.
Let's take it, if someone, if we don't have a motion, let's have a motion.
Because she's not going to be here. Because she's not going to be here, that's, that's the reason it's being tabled, that's 51B, 51B, look at 51B. That's, that's the next item.
Oh, yeah, I guess.
And ordinance and increase the compensation of elected officials. That's 51C.
Right.
No, I have 51C.
Well, yours is wrong.
Yeah. Okay, well, I'm going to go off of.
Yeah, this one says, uh, September 20th, rescheduled. 51B, discussion of the ordinance.
Okay, well, no, I'm looking at the one that was tabled, I mean, it was rescheduled, but the agenda item should not have been tabled. So 51D is off the item, that's agenda, so we'll go to the next one, yeah.
Right, I don't see any of you all.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's on the old agenda, since then they asked to be taken off, that was for rental spot. So 51C does move up, no problem whatsoever.
So, well, forget about what we got on this side.
All right.
This is, this is.
So item 51C, according. 51B, I'm looking at the old agenda D, whatever.
Get a new one, if you're the one.
51B would be on there.
That's right, get me that.
51B, it was wrong.
Okay, no, on the, yeah, that's fine, on this old one that says 51B. Yeah, okay, so item 51B is discussion and ordinance, increasing the compensation of elected officials. Okay, this is it. Okay, I put this on the agenda and the intended purpose was just to reinstate or repeal what was there before and bring everything as it was four years ago when Trustee McMillan was talking about this compensation because he was told it was going to be something different. And the only other people that accepted the raise was the past mayor and the, uh, trustee Wilson. So what, the basic, what this was for, just to put the compensation back to where it was prior to us coming in.
No.
Okay. And that's, that's good. Let me see, who was first?
I was.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, regardless of what was passed, what was passed was passed.
Okay.
And I want to know, um, is this raise a performance-based raise? And then we said you're asking for, and if it's performance-based, performance-based is based on some form of evaluation. And it's performance-based, it's also, we used to get a survey that used to come out in the community that used to give us opportunity to rate what we felt our officials were doing and how well they were doing and how well they weren't. And I'm not sure, maybe I missed that survey and I didn't have that opportunity.
That would be the first though.
I'm sorry, so I want to know whether it's performance-based and if it is, what's the documented evidence that it, uh, should be a raise or they could, how do I?
Okay. You put it up right now? It's not a performance-based thing, Mrs. Taylor, just, just to answer your first question, okay? And in reality, in order to get things done in this community, no matter what people say, you have to put in the time to do the work. And I think that everyone should be fairly compensated for their time. We're not asking, and if you look around all the other municipalities in, in this region, the average salary is pretty much because, if you can do it this way, you can look at salary. Some trustees have salaries, some have insurance, some have other levels of compensation that equal up to it. So the repealing of the ordinance that was done in 2017, it hated, it stated that the mayor's salary was 32,000 bucks. And it was 7,000 bucks for, uh, the liquor commissioner. That, that's what it was currently in the last budget in 2017, if I'm not mistaken. So now we're looking today, they, now, no one knows that all those salaries were taken away from the incoming.
We know that.
From the incoming board, but those other people that complained and hollered and screamed about it also inherited and took advantage of the full raise, and that's fact a- a- as well. So we're not, I'm not putting it out there for anything, and whatever the board decides is fine and dandy. But I'm not afraid to stand up here and say that our trustees work extremely hard, they spend an exorbitant amount of time that it takes to get things done in this community. I know myself, if I was not semi-retired, we wouldn't have half the things that we have in this community. There's major development going on that hasn't happened in this community in over 50 years. Conversations about speech being repaid. I start my day customarily, probably sometimes at seven o'clock, sometimes they end at midnight. But it's the sacrifice I decide to make and my wife support that because I have a passion to serve this village. And the work that's being done takes time to be in there, it's hard to do it from a part-time basis. You say it's a part-time thing, that's BS. If you really think that someone's going to get this job done doing it part-time and going to their job and saying how fabulous that their job is and what they do and they come to two meetings a month, it does not pan out. We wouldn't have an Amazon, we wouldn't have a wire system, we wouldn't have $34.9 million for the electric station. We wouldn't be talking about getting speech repaired, we wouldn't have economic development. We're doing a whole lot. So when you look at, then somebody else asks the question, well, where is this money going to come from? What's wrong with the head tax fund? The head tax fund brings in over $400,000 annually every year, then co-megged into the general fund. And like, uh, Trustee Brooks and Ms. Scotty said earlier, that sure, money should be reallocated and put in the right place. It's fine and dandy, but if you look at the stats and we've done all the stats and checks around, surrounding communities and see exactly what's what. It's fine and dandy, but it's, to put it out there is to put it out there, okay?
Balance.
I put a balance.
Could you, could you freeze what you're proposing? Because no one knows exactly what you're saying.
Sure.
And the balance of the head tax?
It pays about 410, 420 annually.
Okay, that's it, balance, balance, how much is that?
It comes in annually, it comes in, or it comes in every year. It comes in all the time.
Yeah, I've, I've found it.
Find it, Trustee Brooks?
Yes, sir, um, under section two, uh, the village president and the mayor, uh, it starts with, uh, number one is, uh, shall receive the salary of $35,000.
Ooh.
Two, the liquor commissioners shall receive the salary of $10,000. The three would be the can- cannabis commissioner, a salary of $25,000.
Who's that?
Right, right now, if you can stop for a second.
Okay.
There is no cannabis commissioner.
Correct.
Right now, if this is a municipality that has a dispensary, cultivation center, infusion processor, anything of that nature, the cannabis company is just like the liquor, uh, liquor, uh, commissioner. They have to have a cannabis commissioner according to the state of Illinois laws. But that does not come off the municipality. Customarily, the, uh, dispensaries or the vendors pay those salaries. So that was just on there, that's just a future projection. So Trustee Brooks, would you do me a favor and just go back to what it was like in 17? And that's basically what the whole target goal was.
And, and this?
Well, no, that, no, that was.
Then. Right, and then, uh.
No, I'm, no, what was proposed?
B would be.
Rebuilding back, I mean, reinstating on what it was prior to us coming in.
The past is the past.
No, you're, you're asking me for what's going to be proposed, I am asking us to repeal what is in place and put it back to where it was initially, that's what's being proposed, Mrs. Lawson. That's what's being proposed.
They're saying they don't know what the number is.
Oh, okay, okay.
Number four.
So then the, okay, so section two B, the clerk will be 30,000 and the trustee.
Hold on, Trustee Brooks, uh, you've already done with the mayor, the mayor was going to be at 35,000, you said?
No, no, she won't go back to the budget.
The budget? Oh, but when I remember, oh, they got paid.
Yeah, yeah, I think the, the, but we're going, what?
So, so from, from when I got in, when I got in, I'll, I'll say this. When I got in, this is what happened, because there was a repeal and the law says, even if we pass this, the trustees or the officials who sit in this seat after 2023, like trustee Lewis, trustee McFagin, myself, we would still receive the salary of, uh, the thousand dollars a month. But the new trustees who would come in, they would receive 25,000 a year. And in order for the three of us, in order to receive that 25,000 a year, we would have to win our elections in 2025 because state law prohibits us to, uh, give ourselves raise, especially in the middle of a term.
In office.
In office, we can't do that. Um, so I, I just read it off, um, so for the trustees and for the mayor, and if I'm not mistaken, once, if there was a cannabis commissioner, meaning that if, uh, um, right.
If it would have dispatched one of those functions of cannabis.
They would, the commissioner received $25,000. So in saying that, um, I'll go ahead to my opinion about it. Um, I do not like it. When I sat up here and I knew that I was getting only 800, after taxes, I get, I take home 853 dollars. Trustee McMullin, who both of us thought that we would receive the same amount of money that colleagues on the board were receiving, uh, and if I'm not mistaken, uh, trustee McMullin even yelled it out, some of y'all getting $1,600 a month. So my thing is this, is, is in my position, in my shoes, we are part-time officials.
That's right.
I think we all sat here and, and we do have the good question, what have we done lately? We have operators legislators. But the village is not satisfied. We have to make sure before we even get to that point of amount of money, and I got a comparison that I got today and I would like to thank the person who sent it. Um, a lot of the comparisons I can understand, like you see Alsum, the mayor receives 80,000 a year. Uh, Country Club Hills receives 33,000 a year. Uh, those gentlemen are full-time mayors. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I missed that, getting older, ain't I? I'm missing that one, I'm sorry, it looks like little ants at this point. However, uh, your part-time mayors in these, uh, places, um, uh, it, it clearly says the managerial, it is managerial, such as Beecher, that mayor receives 4,900. Homewood, 3, 3,900.
But 50,000 for cannabis commissioner.
I, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't see that. Moni Mayor receives 13,000. Um, let me go more to those who are around us, I, I don't see Creek, I don't know what I want to get. However, I see that, uh, Park Forest Mayor, he receives 20,000 a year. I don't see anything else, and when it comes to the trustees, um, Beecher, 3,000, Country Club Hills, uh, where my bosses were, they get 41,000 a year. As we scoot down Homewood, their trustees get 2,000 in compensation. Uh, Lansing, 13,000, Matson, 15,000, Moni, 4,800, you all pay us 12,000 a year. Park Forest, 7,500 a year for their trustees. Um, you know, the only thing that, uh, I, I will say is that I thought that if you are up here, and I talked to some people, is that if, if you are doing it, maybe putting it to IRNF, I think that's the most you would ever do if you have served up here two terms or more.
Well, actually, IMRF could actually go as soon as you start, you know, actually, it all depends on the distribution of the mayor because when I was a trustee for those 12 years, uh, Al had everybody in IMRF that wanted to participate. But the, but the law changed.
But the law changed, right, right, so that's, that's my point, is that if you're serving to that capacity, you know, put into, into it, but, you know, uh, I, I, look, we don't have any money.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I just think at this point, uh, it was one of those hot discussions, many of you all were not here, trustee McMullin, uh, you know, I don't put it out there for him, but you know, if he's able to tell it and he's feeling well these days, um, trustee McMullin will tell you in a heartbeat that he thought it was very unfair that we, that when this was voted on, that for two years, i- if I've seen him tell another trustee, it's mid, it's two o'clock in the morning, we're talking about all these lawsuits, time to go home. I'm only getting 853,000 while you sit down another, you're getting a 1,600 a month. So let's look at, to that kind of puts a divide and it's not fair to even the public officials, the, the three of us that's here, I'm just being honest. But at the end of the day, this is a part-time position. I always felt if you want more money, go take your ass and go get a job.
Thank you.
And with that, I yield my time.
Okay, Mrs. Lawson, uh, Ms. DeWor.
I still have a question, so like you were stating, Trustee Brooks, about the trustees' salaries and the mayor's salaries in our surrounding community, they're pretty much half of what you all are receiving right now. Not only is that, that population is higher. So they have more people, they have more businesses, and you're asking for more money to me that you all have been thieves if you ask, actually get money, take the taxpayers' monies, to me, you all be considered a thief to me. Because you know you're not doing the work for the money. We're not seeing, taking a phone call, we can return back to some trustees.
Absolutely nothing.
I don't get responses, I don't see anything, you all doing the researches up there, as a trustee, you are not working for this money. So what you're getting right now is way more than what you should get. Worked out, but when they had that raise in 2017, they should have never got it then.
Exactly.
They should have never got that one then.
Right, exactly.
That was too much. We didn't approve it, but we had people on the board that voted for it because they wanted some more money. Didn't deserve it then. I ain't seen a report, y'all come, come, all these different meetings you all go to. We don't come back with a report, no type of analysis, you do nothing. From my standpoint, the trustees are not doing their legislative job in order to get any of the money that they're receiving right now. I don't think they deserve it.
Well, that's, and I'd like to add on to that.
Especially with all these other communities have more things, more people, and they're getting less, and they're still getting a job done.
Place it like a ghost town, ain't nothing here. You might should be getting a dime.
Y'all have my rights, you see, y'all still.
That makes sense. Okay.
Mrs. Sarah, she had a hand up for the moment. Go ahead, say it, Sarah.
He's stealing taxpayers' money, that's how I was considered.
Okay.
Who approves this?
What I wanted to point out when, when, when the trustee Brooks was speaking about the other communities, what they're getting, managerial form of government is different than mayor or, right? And some of those that's getting paid more are mayor or, we have managers that we're paying a good salary for and, uh, the economic development that we're paying a good salary for. I don't know what your role was in getting all the economic, but it really should be the people who we're paying for that. Because if, I think if you put yourself in a position of being the one that's the lead of it, yeah, you're going to expect you should be getting paid more. But that's why I believe step back, the people who are getting paid for that should be doing that. Then you won't feel like you're being undertaken for all the work that you're doing.
Okay, Miss, Mrs., Mrs., um, Lawson, Miss Vanessa, I'm sorry.
First of all, we don't have the money. I don't think Mrs. E. gonna find money for y'all. She can back. Exactly. To ask for extra money, and we can't, we can't, I, I have to agree with Donna. You caught, you can't even reach a trustee. I was lucky yesterday to reach a trustee. You, you call a trustee, the voicemail haven't been set up. One, one of the trustee's phone says restricted. One, one of the trustee's phone says restricted. It, it, it's a, it's a village number, but it's restricted. You can't even reach them. I send out emails to trustees, never ever get a response. And does that raise go to the clerk too? Because we can't get one for you back. I don't see where a raise can come from there. So I, I mean, we can't get cooperation from our elected officials, but yet you all want raises? That is not fair to us. That is not fair to us. It really is an insult. I can see if we had, if you were transparent, if you were trying to provide residents with information. We have all kinds of awkward situations going around here. I'm on the phone all day. You wanna pay somebody, pay me. I've been working awkward for, for the residents. I've done more work in trying to get residents to understand different things because they can't get answers from trustees. And some trustees have told residents, don't call them. Or if you call me again, I'm not answering. So with that type of attitude toward the residents, you want a raise? That is an insult. When are you gonna wake up? That, that is, that is them. That's a part of, uh, uh, uh corruption, if I have to say it myself. That's built-in corruption. To ask for a raise where there's no money to give a raise, and then you're not even doing the work. You, you're not even meeting twelve months. Locked, locked us out of the meetings while it didn't even share the information with us. How dare you?
And I'm the trustee that she talked to yesterday, so I do answer my phone when people call.
You took me out, but you don't even answer your phone.
Not after his promise.
All right.
Wait a minute.
Go, go ahead, go ahead.
First of all, let me explain. What I am embarrassed about is we are sitting here as board, and we are actually, actually disrespecting the residents. And so the thing, the thing about it is that you ask for a raise. Fifteen minutes prior to this, we don't have money to fix our streets. We don't have money to give our children eight thousand dollars. We have a closed pool. These are things that we are looking at daily, daily. But we're on planes and we're traveling, and we're going to different places. We're getting ready to go to the leader cities in Kansas. That makes absolutely no sense. And the thing about this is, is the residents, the taxpayers, the stakeholders are suffering. They're suffering. And then you come in here and you ask them for a raise, you don't answer a phone that they pay for? You don't have a cheap phone, you don't have a little big phone, you have an iPhone, whatever, fourteen or thirteen, whatever. You have iPad. You have all of these luxuries, but you don't have the respect to give to the community. I'm sitting here as trustee and I'm watching this, and it makes absolutely no sense. And then you have the, you have the audacity to argue with a resident that has to vote you back in office? Who does this? And see, wait, wait, wait. It's not about your opinion. It's the time and the place for everything. You should, but you know what? It wasn't the time. It wasn't the time because if you're a pig eating from the trough with all of these residents out here with nothing at their homes, in front of their homes is ragged, the street on your block is ridiculous, and then you ask the residents for a raise? How dare you? I'm embarrassed to sit here and I'm just telling you, I'm just saying, if you ask, I'm just saying to you. I'm just saying, you, excuse me, but I'm just saying this, I'm gonna say this, to say this. It makes absolutely no sense. Everybody is having a good time, and the residents are suffering. The children are suffering. The seniors have nowhere to go. Where is the senior center? Where is the, the farm? The, 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 what, what are we gonna do? The pool is still full of water. The children are still not safe. You have trees that need to be cut down, and the list goes on and on and on and on. And then we have the audacity to ask people to give us more money. We should be thoroughly embarrassed and saying we're sorry to even put something like this on the agenda when we're not doing what we need to do as a board. This is ridiculous. And that, that's, oh, oh, don't cut me off. And then let's, let's go all the way back, all the way back to us not being fair with our democracy. Do you know that I did, and I'm gonna speak openly and to the public, I'm gonna go all the way there because literally it's fun. The village manager was selected, and I've had the opportunity to get to know her and things like that. But prior to her selection, we had someone here, we had going executive session. They didn't come back, so myself and my colleague, we had never met her, didn't know her, hadn't seen her resume, her, her resume, I'm sorry, and she was voted into office, and I had to respectfully decline. But the thing about this is, is as a board, we have locked out our residents, our taxpayers, we locked them out. And I sat outside this building during COVID, in the cold, and asked them to open up the doors, and they didn't. Are you kidding me? And then you wait till a public meeting and say, well, oh, we need thirty-five thousand, we need twenty-five thousand. When are you gonna do thirty-five or twenty-five thousand dollars worth of work? When are you gonna get up and do stuff? If you don't answer your phone and you don't see all of the things that are going on, when are you gonna do state passes for the children? Yes, we had a trustee out there, but it should have been more than just him out there. We all should have been out there making sure that our children are safe. It makes absolutely no sense. Have you came in here and said, well, let's keep away from, people are struggling. COVID has taken a toll on everyone, everyone. Home, people in their homes, they're not doing well. They're not. And then you come in here and say, well, you know, I want, I want some more money, and besides that, I'm gonna put in a fire district and tax you there too. So you're gonna give us a double whammy? And what about the seniors that are living on, 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 on restricted incomes? What about that? What about the single parents? I come from a mob that raised me a lot and put me through Catholic grammar school and high school on a limited amount of money. So what about all of these different things that are going on? And then you ask these people to give extra money? Are you kidding me? You should be ashamed and embarrassed.
Well, trustee, you have your opinion, and, and you know, during, during fighting, just about everything that goes on.
And I don't go, because I don't feel good. It's necessary to go.
Okay, well, you know, and I understand that's what. Well, she might have a conscience, but I, I'll tell you one thing for sure, that you're not gonna learn anything in the neighborhood. You need to go out and build resources and, and meet people.
The five hundred thousand dollars that I brought in was your head money.
So basically.
So don't talk about resources because I went and got six hundred thousand.
I haven't said your name on anything, trustee.
You really, you really sent Senator Patrick Joyce's media press. I dare you.
This is not a meeting, this is just a discussion, so we're not gonna get all hyped up about, about this.
So listen, can I ask, can I?
Tell us that Songya got that money.
Okay.
Yeah, but, but that, that is the truth. Songya got that six hundred. You can claim that, man.
I'm not claiming anything because.
Because you did, guys. So the credit goes to her.
I won't debate it, you guys. You know what? Anything that's gonna be good for our community, I'm all for it. Go ahead, Mrs. Walker.
Okay, so my question is, because now I'm hearing, I thought you guys were asking collectively as a board. So trustee Lewis, do you think you deserve a raise? Do you want a raise?
We don't have enough money.
Okay, what about, uh trustee Logan, what about you?
It's a, it's a big fat no for me. That's why I said, no, you heard me ask for nothing. I had suggested that we not, put it on, if you put it on, it was put back on, it was on before, and I took it off. I said, this is not, we don't have any money. The answer is no.
Okay, what about you, trustee?
We don't have.
I don't, I don't need a raise and I don't wanna raise.
Okay, what about you? Well, I heard you, you said no. What about you, trustee Brooks?
You deserve a raise?
So, 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 go ahead, Madam Clerk, and then, then we're gonna deal this, and we just keep on moving.
I just wanted to know.
Hold it, hold it, hold it. One minute. I have some horn in there. One person at a time, and please don't stop. I'm not gonna go out. Mrs. Morgan, please.
I'm, I'm still talking. I'm still talking. I just wanted to know who on the board wants a raise.
This, this was a conversation just to have out in the open thing, to be transparent. This is no, okay? This is a conversation.
Okay, so it seems like we don't have to discuss, wait, so that's over with because we don't need to discuss that anymore because that, they don't want raises. So we're done with that conversation.
Just a second. Madam Clerk?
To answer you, Ms. Morgan, when I ran for reelection in twenty, in twenty nineteen, I took a cut and I knew of over six thousand dollars. No, I did not ask for a raise. I felt that it was not the time. But I took a cut in pay to run as a servant of the people. Thank you.
So, okay, so we're gonna close this item out, we're gonna move to the next item. Take it off. Item five-one-C.
Go ahead, David. Okay, I'm ready. I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make this short, just, just something, just something to, uh, Cal, think about it in the future. Uh I remember when I first took the job, here's the village manager. When I took the job, I took it for a certain salary. Well, I started off as a finance director, but I became the village manager. When I got here, we were under FBI investigation, so I took sixty, seventy hours a week to get this village to run right when I first started. And I did that for about three or four years, and straight. I did come back to the board and say, you know what? I need more money. Because when I took the commitment for the job, I took it because it was a job that I wanted to do. So I looked at many of jobs, but this was the job that I chose that I wanted to do. And I knew the salary when I chose it. So therefore, I took that job and I worked with it, and regardless of the amount of work that, that's going to come your way, uh you basically have, have committed to that salary, and you're willing to respect those consequences, so keep that in mind. So then when, when you sit around and you say, well, the structure of the village is a managerial form of government. You are a part-time legislative board. The reason why you're that is because you allow the village manager to hire department heads that can do the job that you need to legislate. So when you sit down and you say, well, I got an economic development person, the economic development person should be bringing you to the table at the time that the deal needs to be signed. Not at the time that the negotiation starts, but by the time it needs to be signed. Uh your village manager should be at the table to keep uniform, those are the things that's going between that economic development person and you, and that's the reason why we have these things in structure. These department heads, if you don't have adequate department heads, then like, you're gonna work your butt off. Which means the problem is not with you, it's with the people that you have in place. So when you start dealing with the people that you have in place, then you can effectively do the job in the dollars, I'm not gonna issue.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Item five-one-C, a discussion memorandum of agreement between the village of University Park and the University Park Youth Baseball Organization. Yeah, yeah, it's a conversation. It's a conversation. I ain't afraid to have a conversation. It's okay. It's okay. Okay, here we are, item five-one-C. This is a, this a memorandum of agreement between the village of University Park and the University Park Youth Baseball Organization. Yes, go ahead, Madam Clerk.
So which one? Clerk, I can't hear you.
Do you have a copy?
Yes.
Oh, turn it to number one.
Uh trustee Jenkins, can you please give that uh memorandum of understanding to?
No, I haven't.
You have a copy?
Yes. Well, yeah, well, what? So, okay, let me just start back, uh let me start by saying, um so, wait, I'm gonna wait on there. Okay, lady. Okay, so first of all, I asked for a memorandum, I asked the board to vote on and to sign a memorandum of understanding, which is something that the baseball board decided is needed for a village because every year we keep having the same discrepancies. People don't know what needs to be done, and things are not done in a timely manner per the village, so we were asking for you guys to accept some responsibility and actually put something into place that's going to say that you will do the work every year what is needed. So, um I've given this to you guys at least three times now and haven't had a response back. I've been speaking to the attorneys, what, what's your name?
Jim Worgo.
Oh, Worgo. Nice to meet you, Worgo. Okay, so I've been speaking to Mr. Worgo. And, um, you know, the village has come back with something that's completely not what we asked for. So I wanted to, first, let's go back to what, while we're here, okay? So the memorandum is a list of dated items needed by the baseball organization on a yearly basis and asks for a commitment from the village to complete these tasks in a timely manner. So what I would like to do is read what we submitted to the village first. Cause I'm not understanding why the village is having a hard time, so I wanted to discuss item by item and for you guys to let me know what you don't, what you disagree with, what you don't like. Why are we not going for it with the one that I submitted? Okay, so it says, between the village of University Park, Will and Good Counties, Illinois, and University Park Youth Baseball Organization, the memorandum of understanding sets for the terms and understanding between the village of University Park and University Park Youth Baseball Organization as it relates to the yearly baseball season, the background. For the last two years, the village manager has been unsure of the baseball field's usage, amenities, buildings, pre, during, and after, after-field maintenance and renovations. The purpose and the goal is for this understanding will ensure clear boundaries of what baseball has access to, dates of baseball usage, and capabilities to improve and insist, to, and assist in getting the field up to league standards prior to season start. Also to inform that UPYVO will be authorized to store baseball equipment during the offseason and will always remain in each field's storage room or area. This form is to be enforced and utilized every year. The village's responsibilities prior to April first. So these are what we have, this is what we're gonna need done prior to April first. To prepare all three fields and surrounding common areas, outfield lawn cut with weed and fertilizer placement, infield till and level with old dirt being removed, place seventy-thirty sand pebble mix to be applied, fields to be smoothed out and leveled, infield and dugout weeds to be trimmed and completely removed, bathroom facilities or porta-potties to be in place at each field and kept throughout the entire season. One dumpster and one, and two garbage cans to each field to be kept for the entire season. Ensure that Craig Park concession stand and bathroom have running and working water. Palmer Field has portable field lighting. Garages and dumpsters will be emptied once a week. So these were all things prior that we could not get the village to do, which is common things that the So, these were all things prior that we could not get the village to do, which is common things that the village should be doing. Like, we don't, we shouldn't even have to ask for this, but we feel like it's necessary because we keep having to ask for it and it's not done. So, that's why we just literally took that out and put it in writing so that you guys can see it. Okay, now, we said the UPYBO, which is the baseball organization, our responsibilities would be prior to April first, would be to provide the village with the dates of usage, which is always April first through August thirty-first. Provide the village with the game schedules. Sign out the keys via public works and return them after use. Keep each infield and surrounding areas clean. Will provide weekly maintenance and upkeep of each infield throughout the entire season. Normally, that's a task that's done by the village too, but we would, we would go ahead and agree to do that because we know that sometime the village is low on funds, so that would be what we would be willing to do as an organization. Okay, now, reporting and evaluating effectiveness. The Board of Trustees and the village attorney will evaluate effectiveness and adhere that all tasks are completed by the time in which they are to be completed. Funding, any expenses incurred at Regal Farm by UPYBO as, as, that is a part of the village's responsibility will be reimbursed from the Regal Farm grant or from funding. Any expenses incurred at Palmer Park or Craig Park by UPYBO is a part of the village's responsibilities and we will be reimbursed from the village funds. These above funds will not be included as a part of the six thousand dollar reimbursement previously put in place. This will be addition. Duration, the MOU is at Will and may be modified from mutual consent of authorized officials from UPYBO and the Village of University Park. So, does anybody on the board have anything that they see wrong with anything on that or have a problem with any of those items that we are asking from the village?
So, are you looking at, uh, Ms. Walker, there are two different alternatives. One and two, which one were you looking at? Sounds like you're looking at two.
She just read.
She didn't read her proposal. Right. But you didn't look at any of the alternatives?
Well, let me, I, I did an alternative, but it pretty much tried to mirror what the organization.
Yes, pretty much.
So, so, so the al, the one in the packet that you had is the alternative one. And I, I would say where, I have most of the stuff in there except for, uh, the reporting and evaluating effectiveness, the Board of Trustees, the village attorneys will evaluate effectiveness in here that all tasks are completed. Also, funding, I do not have that in mind, any funding incurred by Regal Farm, uh, by, uh, UPYBO as part of the village's responsibility will be reimbursed from the Regal Farm grant once it received. And I also don't, uh, any expenses incurred at Palmer, Palmer Park and Craig Park by UPYBO as part of the village's responsibility will be reimbursed, reimbursed by village funds. I, I don't have that one. And I, the reason I don't, I, I don't have that, that was something that I wanted to, if the board wanted that, I'm fine, but, um, that I have, it's a bit open-ended in doing the, the, the contract, and I just had some concerns and obviously, we, we're here to.
Yes, I had, I had some, some concerns too, that's why I didn't want to, cause what you have is not at all what we're asking for. It's not it, it's all this other stuff, it has nothing to do.
Understood, and I'm acknowledging, I'm acknowledging that.
Okay, so, um, so, my question is, if we can go back to the original one that I sent, and I wanted to hear from the board and actually discuss each item to see if there was any flaws in it or something that you did not agree with. And also, I wanted to say, I did speak to the new village manager, Scott, about this, and, um, Matt, if you can, can you please describe, cause you've done this field, baseball field work in the past, right?
No, I've never done baseball field.
You haven't at all, so prior to this, you've never touched it. So, so, village manager, um, I know that you were saying that he may have had experience with that and that this would not, this would be something that will be able to be managed, the things that, um, that I have.
No, so.
Ask for it.
In saying this, there were questions that I had. When I, when I first came in office, within, I think a week or two, you had reached out to me and you were requesting reimbursement. I was not gonna release funds for that amount because I need to look at everything, including the state of our village, so I didn't feel that that was responsible. Uh, the other thing was, there were certain questions that I had. For one, there's no cap on the reimbursement. So, you could sit up and say, we did forty thousand dollars of work and we'd have to reimburse you if we signed that agreement. The other thing was that the amount that you gave me for reimbursement, I believe, was around, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it was in the ballpark of around fourteen thousand, somewhere around there, thirteen. And then the additional one thousand something. Then you also wanted the additional monies that's allocated in, as a line item in the budget, is that correct?
Different, totally different, remember, we had that discussion.
Let me say this.
Separate.
It's, it's separate, but it is the same because you, when I asked you, is this money gonna be deducted from that, and your reply was no.
Right, cause it's two different things.
It's two different things, but it's not, it's still going towards your organization, so.
No, it's not, because, the reason why it's not is because we are, the baseball is not responsible for doing the village's job. That's the part you're not understanding. Baseball should be paid for the functioning of baseball every year, not for cleaning up the baseball field. That should be done for everybody in this community as the parks and re, and that's what you should be doing to maintain your fields. So, it's two totally, it's two different, well, it is, so we got.
No, no, ma'am, please just listen. You, you, you're allowed to speak and, and I'm actually allowed to speak as well, so give me, give me that grace. Um, so, I said that, not, not annually, when we had our conversation, you wanted to be reimbursed for that eight thousand whatever, the additional one thousand one hundred, which I authorized because it's under my purview and the cap amount that I'm allowed to. You asked me for the, to, for me to, um, to authorize the full five thousand dollars that I'm able to authorize. And I told you at that time I was not gonna do that because I didn't think that that was fiscally responsible. But I was trying to do some rough justice, if you will, and at the time I said I'll allocate the one thousand, one hundred, whatever it was. Um, but, I'm not talking about moving forward in the future, I'm talking about right now. You wanted me to reimburse you that full amount and you told me that you still wanted the money that was allocated in the line item. That's the other thing that I had an issue with. I'm not saying that that was moving forward, I'm talking about current. The other issue I had, there were other questions as far as if we are gonna be in possession of your, your equipment and you're to get the key, and if that equipment were to get lost or stolen, would you want us to reimburse that? That's not in there. So, there, some of the language is vague, and those are the things that I think about because I think in the mind of us with money, let me say this also, we just had a conversation about how we don't have money for things. The money that you're technically asking for is close to fifteen thousand roughly. When you consider the money for the repairs, which was little, around nine thousand some change, the additional, how much is the line item, six thousand?
It will probably be about ten, ten thousand, um.
So, like I said, let me, let's recap that. Eight thousand some, some dollars, another eleven hundred, that puts us at almost ten. Then, the money.
Eleven hundred, no, eleven hundred was because we offered free registration.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, so I don't look at it, what it, I don't look at it that this is for registration, this is for rocks. I look at it as the overall expenditures, right?
So.
So, with that being said, with that being said, you're essentially requesting around fifteen thousand dollars in total with the line item budget right now and what you want it to be reimbursed for. With that being said, we just had a conversation literally minutes ago about how we do not have funding. So, those were some of the questions that I had as far as if, if it's broken into, which is a possibility, that's not anything that's unusual. Will we be responsible to replace it? If it's, if it's cons, consistently broken into, then do we consistently have to reimburse that? These are questions that, like I said, we're not in here, and those are real viable questions that we have to ask and that we have to adjust because when that time comes, then there'll be all this fighting about who's responsible, who's not. So, this is for clarity purposes, that's why I'm having this discussion, and I think discussions are healthy.
Yes.
And it's okay to have differing views.
What was that last thing you just, well, that's why I'm asking now, is there anything that you think that needs to go in there or something you don't?
I definitely don't, I definitely think that we should have a cap. If, if this even goes forward, because that's not my decision. The only things that I'm concerned about are things that I think should be in that memorandum that I didn't even see in your initial one. Which is, is there a cap? Or is it just however much, you know, that you say that we should reimburse, cause that is the language that was, pretty much whatever expenses we have to reimburse. The other thing is that you have to think of, that I think about, is long-term maintenance. So, this would actually have to be something that would be an additional line item, and I say that because we would have to go out. Matt, you can probably add on to this, but I'm sure some of this stuff as far as rocks, different things that we'd have to purchase, we may not necessarily have it in stock. So, those are additional things that we would have to pay in order to make sure that moving forward in the future that we're able to fund it. These are just things. The other thing that I wanted to add is if we do this for you, there's other organizations within this community. Are they then gonna turn around and say, well, you gave them fifteen thousand, we want fifteen thousand? These are real questions, things that, that will come up, and so those are things that we need to think about.
We, 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 we. Quick question. We, we agree with the, with the security issue, I understand that, that's, that's, that's a quick question. But when you come down and you ask a question regarding the work that the village should have done, those fields, uh, taxpayers pay for that to be done anyway. So, it should not be on the baseball association to have to pay to have those fields done. Everything, and you can go do this survey with the other com, surrounding communities and ask them how many have empty use with the organizations that are not tied directly to the village. Just next door, just over the creek, and anywhere else. And you will realize that the responsibility in the spring and during the summer is for the village to make sure those fields are playable. We didn't ask you to decorate it, we didn't ask you to put no additional, uh, rocks or whatever down. We asked you to get the fields in playable condition. That means land cutting, make sure that it's cut and playable. Make sure that field is turned, because it's set all year long, so we asked you to turn the field. We made sure that the field is at playable condition, the dugouts look pretty well, look pretty good, that's all that's what? Village property.
That's right.
So, when you're talking about the security of our property, we get that. But every year, it is the village's responsibility to make sure those parks are playable. We should not have to spend our one penny to turn dirt. We should not spend one penny to cut grass because that is what we already pay for. We as residents, that's deserved that if we don't even have a baseball program.
You're correct, so let me say that.
That's the same with any sport, so it won't be, anybody shouldn't be to have to come if the village does their job, that's.
I agree, but this is, this is where we're at, right? So, I'm talking about not should have, could have, would in the past. I'm talking about where we're at right now with the money that's being proposed. The other thing is that, creep, different finances, different resources, and just like Trustee Theo, um, stated, trustee said that we have five public works, workers. Let me remind you all, it's seventeen miles of maintenance. And, and, there's things that need to be addressed, improved upon, but this is the reality right now. So, this is right now, I'm not saying this is next year, what our responsibilities are, as I'm telling you, this is what, you know, the reality of what we're dealing with, trying to just get over this hump as far as it goes with payment, things of that nature. Also, I wanted to ask you, uh, Mr. Sevier, how do you feel about, as it relates to a cap on the amount of money that we would have to reimburse?
I don't have, I don't have a problem with it, with a cap on it as long as you being real listening. Because I don't want you to say, well, we were short on staff. That's not the baseball's program, that's not our responsibility, that's not our problem. The issue is that we collect money from residents board to have a baseball at a certain stated period of time. We've got to come to this, the, the, the village manager in the past on several occasions, early in the game, talking about these things. We get a verbal yes, and then it doesn't happen. That's the reason why we asked for the MOU, that has been going on in all other communities since the beginning of time. So, I just wanted to make sure that you understand that this is not directed directly towards you. This is direct, directed toward the history that we've had to deal with over the last three years of not having our voices heard and still trying to provide quality programming for the kids that the village refuses to provide. So, let's think of the two big, two hits we're taking while we're trying to solve something for the community and stop saying, well, shorthand the staff, that's three, it's not our problem. We, we wanted to have a program for the kids, keep these kids out of the street. We spent the money to have these parks done, and we did that, and that is truly the work of park director. We should be reimbursed for those services in spite of, you're taking, this board is taking trips. This board is doing a lot of things that should not be done in terms of us not having dollars. But when we're talking about we're doing something for the kids, you wanna come to us and say, woo, we don't have any money. Now, I don't have a problem with that, if you gonna say that to that board as well. Because we have a bunch of kids versus that board, and they're spending more money on one trip than we're asking for to have a field done.
So, I say that to say, I do understand, I do understand.
So, Miss Stillwater?
Yeah.
I, I do want to point out that, like, Rob, the reimbursement is separate to this. This is something because we shouldn't be having to do the fields. We already received our reimbursement for the previous fiscal. The new budget has not been created, so that's something separate. So, we're not saying we're gonna get one then, but budget has to come out, which would have that in there. We already received the previous, we wait for the new budget, what we will still be able to receive, if it's in there, are six thousand dollars. That's separate. This is for reimbursement of having to do work that the village is supposed to be doing.
And I, Ms. Stillwater, I totally understand.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure those.
No, I do, I, I understand that.
Fifteen thousand, it's not fifteen thousand.
But in my, so in my mind, when I look at money, I look at how much we're spending in a certain area, and that's the only reason why I brought that up. If we weren't here dealing with the, uh, reimbursement issue, we wouldn't be having this conversation. So, that is strictly what, I understand what you're saying, but at the same time, I'm telling you what, I'm reiterating what the conversation was and what was said. But those are other issues, aside from that, there are real issues as far as the, uh, if things are, if it's broken into, who's responsible for that, and as far as there needs to be some type of a cap.
Okay, so those, those things to be had, but let's, let's just be clear that this is unheard of. This is the first time everybody is hearing that somebody could not get some work done on the baseball field. This is not something that's standard. So, thi, this is like a big deal. Um, and it's only an issue with this administration, and that's what the problem is. We've never had this issue in a prior administration, so that's, that's to the question of why, why?
Can I ask you a question, Ms. Walker?
Uh huh.
How long has your baseball program been going on?
I've been here since twenty fifteen, I've been part of the baseball.
I mean, you're, you, this, this new program.
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty, so this is something brand new, okay? So, this didn't have anything to do with the prior administration?
It does, because I was a part of that board as well, and we, if the prior administration, we've never had these issues, that's what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
And everybody has been a part of baseball since forever, he has been a part.
I've been part of it forever too.
So, you know you ain't never had no problems with getting your fields run, so you can attest to that. This is the first time that anybody in this whole entire South suburbs have heard of this.
And listen, I, I'm not even disagreeing with you, because those fields belong to the Village of University Park, those fields should be maintained. And we have to do a contract to a person, if we're short on manpower, that's fine and dandy. I am a hundred percent in agreement that these fields need to be done, and it is our responsibility.
But we, okay, so we did it, so you guys don't have no problem with reimbursing our money back, you shouldn't. Like, I don't even see why we gotta come and ask you for this, so can, can you guys take a vote on at least reimbursing back what we did?
One thing I would like, one thing I would like to say now, if we know that we have an established budget for all the different programs, I don't think that anyone should exceed it. Now, there's some costs that you may have to, like, if fields need to be done, I think that really needs to be, has some prior approval too, going out exhausting the additional eight thousand dollars.
Well, well, you wouldn't need to, that's, and the village manager has. Well, you wouldn't need to. That's what, and the village manager has told me, and that's how I was saying to you, no disrespect to you, I don't want to listen to promises because we've been told this so much. This is the reason why we're asking for the memorandum. Because you told me that Matt has the experience, we have all of this done, it's no problem. So you gave me that guarantee that these things would be done. So we wouldn't have to be worried about this.
Let me clarify. I actually told you I was trying to bring someone on who was a verse in Parks and Recreation. It is not Mr. Spacy.
Okay.
So I want to clarify that. The other thing is, like I said, you had expressed your, you were disenfranchised with past experience. I don't want to, you know, keep bringing that up because I'm trying to move forward. But I offered you that olive branch just to immediately make sure that was taken care of. You did pick up that money, you're in receipt of that money. So I am trying to work with you, and I understand, like I said, if I didn't, I would not be trying to reimburse you for anything. Let me say that.
I want to also, when you were saying that a cap, I want the cap to be agreeable. A cap should be agreeable with the village and with the baseball organization because we also have looked at the cost of each one of those fields. So we don't want this a cap of ten thousand. We know it costs so much for each one of the fields. So I just want to make sure that whatever cap it is, that we are both in agreement with that cap. And don't give where you're going to, because it's not just...
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
And not only that, it's, it's like, okay, we're going to give her one thousand dollars, but it should not have been questioned. Okay, they sent the eight thousand. We need to do what's right. Give them back their money, period. Like, to me, that's, saying here, here you go. So I, I get it, but I don't understand how anybody could sit up there and not think that, and think that that's okay. Like, you don't, I don't get how you guys don't feel convicted about what you're doing.
That was one of the things that came out of the baseball.
Put me book away.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I, I, I sat here and I listened to everything that actually was just said. My position is this. When I was the athletic director for the Moni Maverick football team, we had to share that fireman's part for, with, um, with the Moni baseball team. And I was in charge of the fields, and I understood on the north end of that field, it belongs to baseball. Uh, one thing I would say is that I'm reading through really all of this, agreements from the village and agreements from baseball. And what is baffling to me is the details of everything that I'm sitting here reading. Um, much, much of what baseball is asking should already be provided. I know when I came here in 2017, it was very clear that the Parkland Recs department had to be shut down due to financial reasons. I sat on that same board where we agreed that if you had a program, we would give you six thousand dollars as a reimbursement. If I'm not mistaken, you had to provide receipts.
It was a reimbursement.
Up to six thousand dollars. Correct. Trustee Milton Payton was the advocate for that.
Eighteen thousand.
Yes. So, right. So we were, this, this year, I would say, as long as I'm sitting in this seat, of course, naturally, I'm going to preach what I know we were trying to do to relieve, to reduce this damn debt. And trying to reduce the debt, we also tried to keep kids in mind. What I, I am little getting upset about is that I did have opportunity to sit in on one of the meetings. And usually when trustee Brooks sit in on something, it's over with me, like, it's not going to be any garbage behind it. But for me to learn that the field had to be turned over by baseball, there was arguments about, um, equipment storage, you name it. I mean, this is really getting ridiculous. Right.
I paid, what, nine hundred dollars for a season because they refused to keep the baseball's equipment in anywhere in the village. And I paid nine hundred dollars because I had to restore it every month for nine months. Are you kidding me?
That's, and see, yeah, so you, you hear that. And the problem I have with that is that, once again, just right next door, the reason why I was coaching for the Mavericks in the first place is because the black ball that I get in this village, when it come from certain people who don't want me to be known, but it's too late, I'm known. Moni, that shed, when you drive down that street, it's twenty-five miles per hour, that shed that is owned by the village, baseball can store in there, football can store in there. I don't understand. It's something that, there's something's wrong with this that I believe the two board members are trying to get involved, like, we're trying to get them understanding. Every time we come out to the field, I hear it's going to be done. But then I come to find out, it wasn't done. So I'm looking at these, this, you know, Mr. Rocco did, you know, he's doing his best. So what I hate is that that gentleman is trying to just do the best he can, but I know he probably looking like, what the hell is going on? Because as I read through this, one thing I, I didn't understand, usually baseball, I know as a Maverick, you couldn't be one of my coaches. Yet we get our own background checks. Why are we even, and here, why are we even being bothered with who's coaching baseball in section twelve, background checks?
Right.
That should not even be our concern. So I think at some point, we need to come to this understanding that we need to take care of parks. I don't care about the park district and all that. You know what? It, it don't matter. We have public works. And if it, we cannot, if we were unable to meet the requests of certain things in this village, what we did is we contracted out. And like Madam Kurt just said, if there's a receipt, you bring it to us, manager pay, I think it was an incident with football, manager pay, we see those, uh, 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 those receipts and the village reimburse football for whatever the situation was. So this back and forth, let's figure this out. I think a lot that baseball is asking is staying. And I just don't think, something else, I mean, even with this, this, the term of the agreement, I wrote in my notes, um, the term of agreement, section one, am I correct here? Let me just scroll down. Section one, the term of agreement should commence October first and end December thirty-first, 2024. I don't even know if it's going to be live in 2024.
Right. I don't think it should be. I think it should just be an ongoing thing.
I just, I just, right. I disagree that, I disagree with section one. I don't think it should be overturned. I, I really don't. And the more I look at it, the use of the baseball facilities, I just, I just wish at this point, asking for a dumpster in most of the municipalities next door, they're doing it for their kids. Why we just can't do it for ours? I really don't want to see another season of this because this is just, this is just ridiculous. And if we need somebody to chill, I'm just saying at this point, uh, um, I think I brought it up before. You all helped me with this. I didn't know about the seventy-thirty sand pebble. I don't know about that. I can tell you about tall mucosa and how tall the grass would be for some cleats. I can tell you that. But, you know, I think we just need to be reasonable here. That, you know, if it can't be done, we have a six thousand dollar reimbursement back to baseball. If it's something that the field needs to be done, I think at this point, discussion need to be, need to be made. The other point I want to make is that it wasn't with manager Scott. So we can't beat up on her.
Right.
About something that somebody else was supposed to do. So what was old?
That's not...
I would like to know.
Well, that's what, why I'm bringing it back up again. So I brought it up in March, I brought it up in April. Now I'm back again in September.
Did you have, so the key thing though?
Village manager, the new village manager has the receipts. Yes.
So the receipts is about more of the field? Is that?
It's all the field. That's it. The, the money that we used, other than that, was the money that comes to us for operational. That's, that's what I'm saying. That's totally separate. We have separate things we use the funds for. This was just nothing but field. All field.
And if I'm not mistaken, that field was not ready.
And the, the problem is, had Ms. Ernestine had, had responded, and I sent you all the email back in March.
You did.
Saying we had to be from, he's here, from PTL. He was going to do it all for fifty foot. We didn't jump on that. So because we waited till one week prior, we had to do a rush thing, and we had to get people in quickly. And that's what caused it to go up.
And if, and if I can throw my hat in there, I was willing to come out and sprint your grass.
Definitely couldn't get the village to do that. That was asking way too much. So, for Ernestine, that's unheard of. So.
Public works did go out, man, man.
This is a disco, this is a disco.
Yeah. So, so those are the two things. On that support, can we get the board to agree?
How much, how much is it? Because this is what, this is, this, look, board, I really don't want to hear about this no more. Because this, the president has stood up at this podium, this would be the third, fourth, third time.
On this subject.
On this subject. And on top of it, it should not be where it feels like it's the board versus baseball. And I hate that feeling because everybody is watching us, and they feeling, and if we want to start anything with baseball, we got to do an agreement with the village in order to get something started. And that's not the case. That's not the case. So, I mean, we need to...
But that is going to be the case. So if you're asking us to do it, we're going to make sure it's done with all the other sports as well. So that will be the case moving forward, if that's going to be the case for baseball.
Access to, to do the letter.
So, right.
Are you all aware that, like I say?
We're asking for the letter to be signed, the memorandum to be signed, and for the eighty-six hundred dollars back. Those are the two things that we're asking board, the board to decide on today, if possible.
I need to tweak this.
We will. I have down exactly what, um, what she has. I have it down. We can add those two things in right now.
Did you get your six thousand dollars, Ms., Ms. Robin?
We, yeah, we got that.
So it's, it's, it's the, it's the?
That's field.
Field, that's the issue, and which I can attest, the field was not ready. And how much is that?
Eight thousand six hundred.
Eight thousand six hundred. And that's for how many fields?
Two. That's for two.
Three thousand a field.
Well, one needed way more work than the others. So.
Which parks was that?
Regal. Regal was a hot mess. Regal, the, the grass was up.
Oh, yeah.
Way up, and nothing had been done on that.
It was still wrong. In fact, that was right after H&R Block. Right. Okay.
Yeah, that one was all the way bad. Um, but like I, I said, we did have one. Well, we didn't get back to him at times, so that went away.
Because I remember you letting me know that one guy wanted ten thousand dollars for it.
Well, that was just for Regal. We had gotten a bunch of different estimates. They won. Yeah, one wanted fourteen, one said twenty, and one said ten. So when we had the one that was for fifty-four hundred for both, we was like, oh, my God, that's a steal. Let's go ahead and go with that. We presented it to Ms. Ernestine, and she gave us excuse our best news. No, we don't have it, this and that. And, and then it wound up nothing being done. And on May seventh, we had to rush and pay to get all this done.
Okay.
So, so, um, so if we can, just, um, those are the two things. Oh, and so with village manager Scott, she wanted to add in there a cap on the reimbursement, and then also add in there that the village would not be responsible for lost or stolen.
Well, 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 cap is six thousand.
No, no, she, no, this is for the reimbursement. Take out this, take out the six thousand. Take it out. We're talking about if we got to go and do the village's work.
For something we should do.
Right. If we got to go in the future, if the village does not have this stuff done, that's on the list by May first and have the fields playable, if we got to go out and do it because it's last minute in order for us to play because you're putting us in a bind, if we have to go out and do it, then the village reimburs us back. But we're in, we're hoping that we won't have to go through this if you guys sign a letter of memorandum.
Who got the field for baseball? I mean, excuse me, football? Right now?
PTL.
PTL? So we pay for that?
Yeah.
The only thing they do is strike. I know that for a fact. And if they want to drop anything extra, I think I even asked PTL to help me out in Moni up or something. The village, the, everything else falls right back. So the majority of the work is the village. We pay PTL for that.
So, let me ask you a question.
So it's, it's, it's minor. That's what I'm saying. Whatever is asked, it's minor.
So, so Ms. Walker, right now you're just concerned about your reimbursement. I...
Yes, I'm concerned about the reimbursement and also the letter of memorandum. Yes.
But as you got receipts and everything, your reimbursement, that's mine and dandy.
Yes. So if we can go ahead and...
I don't think it's a mine and dandy resistance from anybody on the board if the work hasn't been done and the receipts are proper.
Thank you.
Right. And, and what Ms. Scott was saying is that she just got here. She's not going to hand out.
And that's smart.
Loop.
I see.
But the board.
She's not going to hand out a ton of money. So I, I understand her position. So as a board, because this sounds like a, a reimbursement issue, to board tonight seems like a reimbursement issue that they don't want to go through it again. And I think we can just...
So we don't, we don't either because it, it doesn't make sense if the concept is positive.
And that's what it's boiled down to.
Do the right, the old, old thing, if the field's prepared. And you know, the field's May first, that's whether, whether permitted naturally.
Naturally, right.
So we're going to move, I don't have a problem with the eight thousand. I think the language needs to be tightened up a little bit with some dialogue. But as far as the reimbursement goes, I don't think that we'll have a problem with it.
So I moved the table.
Yes, thank you.
I moved the table this. Don't...
Wait a minute.
I mean, I don't want to move to the agenda. I don't, I don't need to move to the agenda.
We're holding for the discussion. But for the record, we want to make sure that reimbursements are properly taken care of with the matching receipt. Okay?
You hear that, Ms. Robin?
Wait a minute. No, I didn't.
Because we need to mend the, we need to mend the memorandum of understanding because of the numerous village managers that we get in.
Right.
If another one comes in before next year, we want to do the same process. That's why we need the documentation.
Yeah.
Should be here.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll.
Should be here.
Oh, wow. Thank you for that vote of confidence. Yes. Yeah, but we need, we need it. Let me, let me say this. So I do have the receipt. I do have the receipt. I do have that it was paid with a card. I did confirm that. And the amount is eight thousand six hundred dollars. I'm looking right at the receipt. Let me say this too. Yes, this has to go before the board because I was not going to say this amount of money. However, I do think we do need to just put in the language and tweak it, take it back to the attorney to tweak the language, to add those, those couple points in.
And we won't kick this hand down. We'll, we'll, we'll address this and come back. But the main thing, we want to make sure that you get your reimbursement for the money that you have already exhausted out. That's only a right thing to prepare.
Okay.
Hold, hold, hold. One second. One second, please.
Will the reimbursement be done prior to the break of meeting next week?
I would like to get it done as soon as possible. I would like to get the reimbursement done as soon as possible.
We're going to have baseball committee also. And what I find...
How much you charging us?
[laughter]
You heard, I heard it. It's good to see you smiling before a change. Good day.
It's good for you to do something to make me smile. Uh, here's what I want to say also. You should see the problems that we went through. Just like trustee Jenkins said, she paid out of her own pocket for the storage of the, uh, equipment. We need one of these units here. Our cap is one hundred on round to your, uh, uh, to your office. But we need a place to store the, uh, equipment.
You know what? We need a place to store, not just baseball equipment, a variety of things. There's, there's a lack of a lot of things going on in the, in the village. This isn't a band-aid administration. Sometimes we make a sacrifice with a law board. But we truly understand the need for storage, quality programs, great playing fields and everything else. There's no argument with that whatsoever. All right?
Trustee, I have one question. Just a clarification. Is, is the board, does the board want to, and I agree with trustee Brooke, I, I would prefer no agreement, to be quite honest. I, I would prefer no agreement, to be quite honest, 'cause I, I think this probably should be, could be better handled.
Wait, wait, I understand.
But the, the history, it hasn't been that way, so I understand, so I'm, I'm trying to, you know, meld those two, but, so does the village want to take the first crack at maintaining the fields, and if they don't, then the, the baseball organization could, would be entitled to reimbursement?
I think, I think maybe contracting it out would be the best thing.
Yes, yes, and, and I would say this, yes, if we're not, at which I personally don't believe, we will be hiring more personnel, I believe that we need to go through the three bids to handle it.
Your qualified proposal, let somebody else be there.
To, to, to do it, right.
Contractual.
Can't do it, that thirty, seventy mix is what threw the ball. They were out there helping with the facility, when they got out there on that field, they found out that it was the seventy, thirty match requirement, and there was no one in Public Works that knew how to do that. They did the best they could.
Okay, that makes sense. That makes sense.
Same thing we're gonna wind up having to do at the metro station, exact same thing.
Right, I, I mean, at this point, at this point, the, 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 the staffing, the things that we're doing right now is that more than likely we're gonna have to bid it out. And that, that way, the, the village knows.
Right.
The village, the village knows where the mon, in, in football, where the money is going. And that way, we ain't gotta do all of this, 'cause at the end of the day, to me, it seems like, at the end of the day, storage and reimbursement is the issue. Uh, the, 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 the storage, um, and the, the village, to me, what's wrong with, uh, like what we got right here, that, uh, container? We can put the container out there, baseball will have a key.
We could, we, we got a fast storage somewhere.
Because, right, because the other, the other, that's what the Creek Bulldogs do, am I, am I not mistaken? The Creek Bulldogs do it, the Monee marriage is stored in a shed.
That's their park, uh, park thing, that, that, the storage thing?
They use it, they put their, they put their football equipment in the, in a, in a container. So I think we can simplify, it's, you know, we, but, to try to avoid, because I was always told from a judge, if you can always settle it before it gets to me, settle it. And before it get to the board, let's settle this before it comes back to us. Meaning that the field needs to be done, that we do the three bids, to make sure the field is complete, and also put some type of container out there for you all, instead of Trustee, uh, Jenkins Bell spending nine hundred dollars for storage, that should not be happening. So my point is, is that if everyone else is doing it, we can do it. Especially if the two of us have experiences from other organizations with dealing with you, and if you all have done it as well and had your kids in the same type of program. So, I think it needs to be done that way.
And that, and that storage container would probably be needed at Palmer Park, because basically football and baseball could use that one, we are utilizing storage, we have storage at Grant Park and we have storage at Regal Farm, which is that garage, so. Well, well, it's not, but if it just be, just updated, but.
We, it's obvious that there's a storage problem, I think, we can come up with a solution, we know what the problem is, it's like the solution board is make sure that things are stored properly, so everyone can have the utilization of it, because it's been a problem for some time now, it's not a new problem.
So wait a minute, and so the memorandum, so I just need to update that verbiage and get it to.
Just, just work the word go and, and, and we'll get the.
And when are we gonna get?
But right now, we're gonna get you your money, okay? Alright, thank you. Okay, next item on this agenda, discussion, five-one-dee, discussion terminating contract with True Green and entering into a contract with Green Fields Lawn Care. Let's start the conversation. Trustee Brooks.
So, this, to me, this is very simple. Um, Green Fields Lawn does something that's very irrelevant, and that is, they cut and they treat the grass. There's not too many that do that, and, uh, I can attest that I have seen, uh, the work. I looked at this bill with True Green, and we're putting, we're pushing out, first of all, we're budgeting, our budget each year for, uh, lawn service, uh, was at twelve thousand. Um, looking at this, we can save, uh, five thousand six hundred dollars, uh, with this, uh, uh, termination of this contract, and that's my opinion. Budget, this is common sense.
So, I, I've got, I've got a question, first of all, manager, someone, someone help us out, give us the opportunity, how do we get into an agreement with True Green Green Period?
Okay, just to give some background, I asked that this be placed on the agenda, uh, because I'm coming in, I'm starting to review things, look at different contracts, things of that nature. It came across my desk by accident, actually, I saw, um, an invoice for True Green, called, contacted True Green, actually, the director, Matthew Stacy, called and found out that someone, um, that was in Public Works had, uh, signed a contract for several years with True Green. I actually have that contract with their signature, um, they were not authorized to sign that. Uh, like I said, without going into the past, it was someone who was a former employee and they did sign it, and I do have that contract, it came directly from True Green. I have the email directly from them, and they signed a multi-year contract. So in reviewing that, I immediately, uh, realized that, as I started pulling invoices, uh, that, you're right, trustee, it was, it was quite expensive, um, and then I had had subsequent conversation with, uh, Mr. Paul, please forgive me if I don't pronounce your last name correctly.
O'Leary.
O'Leary, so I had conversation, uh, with him, and, um, he came to me with a proposal for some of the lawn care. He even, I need to say this, extended to do additional care at no cost. So, um, it was a little bit out of my authorization, once again, I understand that we did not go out for a bid, I did not go out for a bid, however, as you stated, the things that he's done for the village, um, and also the fact that he offered to treat additional areas, and I have that in writing from him, at no cost to the village, I kinda think this is a no-brainer, like you said, it's saving us thousands of dollars, uh, these are things that I'm gonna be reviewing, just try, trying to find additional money, but that's something that came up. Yes, ma'am, additional areas, um, Mr.. Okay, so, I say that to say.
Ms. Morgan, let her finish, Ms. Morgan, please. Ms. Morgan, let her finish, please don't interrupt this.
So I, I wanted to bring this before the board because I thought that it was important, but, um, I do wanna terminate that contract and that's the reason why I wanna terminate it, he really wasn't even authorized to, to sign that agreement.
Okay, thank you for pointing this way, mayor. So, one question, who was the village manager when he signed that contract?
I believe it was, uh, the former administrator.
Ernestine Beck, okay.
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, what was the question, I heard somebody say something over there. According to what I've seen, it. Right, because I felt the const, because I felt the discussion. Well, he won't be here to defend himself, but I know I said as a trustee that we need to spray. So, if, if, we don't wanna, that's why I say, Ms. Scott, this was before you, and I don't wanna go further, but I know I said we need to spray this village, and, and, and apparently, that was, I don't see, I don't remember it being a multi-year, but, um.
I believe it was three years at least.
Okay, and if I'm not mistaken, it was one of those situations where, it's a situation where someone is not here, it don't matter, it's irrelevant.
Right.
Exactly, all I know is, this was very short and simple, we could've moved on, he does a good job, over. Just put it on, I, I, I wanna put it on, yeah, so we can know, it's ten oh seven.
Okay, that's moving forward, we're moving forward with Green Fields, we're terminating the contract with True Green and moving forward. With Greenfield, awesome, awesome. We're moving to the next agenda for next, for a week from today, actually, yes. Uh, item five-one-dee, a discussion in ordinance moving code enforcement from under the purview of the fire department to the village manager, open discussion.
No, I'm sorry, mayor, I, I requested that be pulled.
Oh, you did, okay. So that is going to be scratched.
And I'll explain my reasoning just quickly, so there's no conspiracy theories, the village manager, and technically I'm over code enforcement. Um, there was some conversation, thank you, Mr. Sebier, for that vote, compliments for that one item. Um, so I say that, um, there was conversation when I first came in, um, regarding some stuff, and they were, someone from the fire department complained, there was, there was a lack of communication with the inspectors, and, and so I started delving into that, and I realized that, um, that they're right in the fire department, so there shouldn't be any type of communication issue, um, and I felt that, you know, so I said, oh, I'll handle that. But then I ended up realizing, well, I'm over the, the code enforcement anyway, so there's no need for that. So that's the reason why I asked for it to be pulled.
Alright, thank you, David, I thank, thank you for letting her off the hook. The next one should be, uh, oh, this is Mrs. Morgan's, maybe, five F-one-F, discussion segregate and rename special events fund to project fund.
Alright, so, let me say this, um, I did put this on the agenda as well, and I'm gonna explain why. When I came here, I heard repeatedly from many people in the community that there was a quote-unquote slush fund, and that the mayor had a fund for the Mo's account, uh, for special events totaling two million dollars. I heard this repeatedly, so I did, uh, ask Ms. Kelly, Joselia Kelly, for some back information, I asked her to look at the previous budget, and I started going through it line by line. I thought it was very misleading, the title of special events fund, and I can see why people got that misconstrued. Let me say this, there's a couple things I wanna address. I heard that Mrs. Rudes was named, and I'm being real transparent, so I'm gonna tell you the things that I heard. That Mrs. Rudes's name was on the, the, uh, account, you know, the statements, um, that there, this money was for the special events fund, and when I started looking in the monies, it was actually the contrary, so I wanted to give a breakdown. Also, uh, I thought that a more aptly appropriate, appropriate name would be, from what I looked at and when I spoke with Ms. Kelly about what that account was used for, I thought of the Community Development Project Fund. Now, I'm just presenting this, they can come up with a different name, it makes me no difference, um, but I think that it should be separate and it should look separate. It, it is very misleading when it says special events fund. So in that money, there is approximately two million, one hundred forty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty-two cents. What is that comprised of? ARPA money, in the form of four hundred sixty-eight thousand, six hundred seven dollars and fifty cents. There's also MFT funds in the amount of three hundred and thirteen dollars, three hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and forty-four cents. It accrues roughly, of course, it changes when the money was deposited, you know, whatever, depending on the amount of interest, but it's approximately a thousand dollars a year in interest, roughly, not to the dollar. Um, there also was miscellaneous funds that go back to, uh, permit fees and things like that, so when they've done projects, they have put money in there. Now, what I didn't agree with was, things should be segregated. ARPA funds should not be commingled with MFT, also there was Amazon money, one million dollars. Uh, when I asked Ms. Kelly why that money was in there, she said that, so this is my understanding, there was things that were spent, equipment, whatnot, um, for, with that Amazon money. That Amazon money, because the money was taken out of the general fund, it never got put in the general fund. I looked at it, I personally looked at the statements, Mrs. Rudes's name is not on there, I asked for past statements, so if money was moved, that money would show a deficit, it was like a bank account, okay, it is. So there was no money that was taken, it's accrued interest, um, the ARPA funding has not been spent, we're also getting another allocation of ARPA money coming up, FYI, um, so that will then will bring us to roughly nine hundred thousand dollars. So the fund, the ARPA funding has not been spent, the Amazon money was not transferred properly, the MFT funds should be segregated, um, the yearly interest and the miscellaneous. So, I put this on there because I think that it should be renamed, it was very misleading, the title, I don't really, I, I can't keep going back, so I don't know who named it that, um, but moving forward, I feel that it should be named something that is more appropriate to the things that it's for now. What it's not gonna be used for is for special events. This is for things of more on a capital improvement project, but it's not really capital money, right? So this is gonna be used for projects as it pertains to Abbott and Amherst, different things that can be used. MFT funds can be used to cut trees on a street like Abbott and Amherst where it's being repaid. So those are some of the plans that I have for, uh, for that funding. Also, so you're aware, ARPA funding can be used for payroll, um, there's certain things that it can and cannot be used for. So I plan on using that, there's different ideas that I have that I'm gonna be working on, um, as a village manager, as it relates to payroll, um, as it relates to clocking in and out, things like that. So those are the things that I'm, I'm looking into.
Okay, so one second, one second, Mr. Sebier was first, then Ms. Lawson, then Ms. Morgan, then Ms. Hur.
That was, that was a good job, uh, great explanation, appreciate, appreciate that explanation, uh, actually. But the, the issue that I'm running into is the renaming of the Mo's account.
It's not the Mo's account.
Special events account, the renaming of the special events account.
Right.
From an accounting standpoint, you just cannot rename an account on a GM. What you can do is you can't create new accounts, you can't create the new ones, project funds, project fund for. Or, no, 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 we do fund accounting here. So since we do fund accounting here, if you're gonna break up that account, you might as well go ahead and break it up correctly.
Yes, we are gonna break it up correctly.
If you're gonna break it up, create a project fund for Aqua, income statement and an expense account for Aqua, so that you can track both. A project fund.
This money is not gonna be used for Aqua.
Okay, let me, let me go back. I use MFT, I can't get the word out right now, since I'm a MFT. We use that as, as the three that you was talking about, keep this in mind. The MFT, create a income account for MFT, separate fund, not a complete fund, but at least a revenue account and a, and an expense account. The money that's in that special event account, transfer the amount out of the special events account to the MFT fund. Transfer the money out of it, out of it, uh, special event account to the other fund, so that we can have a good general ledger track. Because if you change it, it's gonna wipe out the old name, and a, a auditor coming in won't be able to find you. So if somebody was coming in looking for that specific account, because you changed the name, which you should not use after seven years, uh, on a GM with no activity after three.
That's right.
So therefore, you should create a new account and make the transfers into those individual accounts as individual funds. Or if you really wanna do it right, you create a fund for each one of those. We used to have an MFT fund in the past, so that would be the correct way to do it, but the fastest way to do it is to do your revenue and expense account for each one of those titles you were talking about. And that will at least allow some tracking in case someone is looking for those dollars from the time they came in to the time they got exhausted, but just changing the name on the count, no.
I'm not just changing the name, like I said, we're gonna segregate the money properly, MFT funds cannot be commingled with any other funds. So I'm very aware of that. Also, I'm working with John Kasperic in order to facilitate this, so, um, everything will be done. be done properly.
Okay, one second, it was Ms. Lawson, then it was Ms. Morgan, then Ms. Daleworth.
My question is, if there is no money, um, you, you're going to use this ARPA money to pay the, uh, payroll?
Yes, so let me explain this, there are certain things you can and cannot do with ARPA money, it's very strict. One of the only things that you can use for it is payroll. So a lot of municipalities struggle when it comes tax time and they're getting taxes in, and we're always short, typically it's around December. So to make sure that we're able to keep running things smoothly, yes, I will make sure that that money's set aside, so that we can close the gap. Um, I'm reallocating money, looking at money, how it's segregated, and that million dollars, if that goes into the general fund, that will help bridge some of the monies that is needed for things. That money should have been put back in, in the general fund since it was taken out of the general fund. We have receipts to show expenditures for Amazon money, but it was never reconciled properly.
So, uh, what, what I'm trying to understand is, we don't have any money, you're going to have to pay the payroll out of the ARPA money, but you're still going to take all these trips there, be, because we don't have any money?
So let me be clear, I didn't say we didn't have any money, you said that. I'm telling you that the money for Amazon was a million dollars, it was not put in the general fund. So I'm not sure how you got, we have no money when I just said that we're going to take the million dollars and allocate it back, pay it back to general fund. That's what I said. I didn't say that we're broke, I didn't say that we don't have any money, I just said we do have money that was not properly reconciled.
So if we do have money, why can't you pay the payroll out of the money we have? Why do you have to then go?
That's not, no, 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 so ARPA money can only be used for certain things. I can't decide I'm not going to use ARPA money for this, I'm going to use it for that. You know what's going to happen? They're going to say, give us our money back. I will provide you with the list, you can actually go online, it's federal, there's only certain things you can spend the money for. One of the main things they said was payroll, and one of the issues during COVID was police and fire specifically. Let me keep it one hundred with you. That is one of the biggest, heftiest payrolls, is police and fire. Also with the overtime. So a lot of times when you had to apply for this ARPA funding, you had to state what that money was going to be used for prior to you receiving the money. I did this in another town, and I put payroll, because that is the easiest way that you can prove and shore up funding, is that you just had to submit payroll. So police and fire, depending on the municipality, might run you a half a million dollars a month, it's, it's very expensive. So a lot of municipalities set upfront, it's going to be used for payroll. Payroll was a big issue during COVID, that's why when they released this COVID money, it had an intention of assisting with payroll, because they understood that not only were people struggling to make payroll, they understood that there was a decrease in sales tax, there was an immediate decrease in people paying their property taxes, because people were afraid and insecure. Sometimes people didn't necessarily lose their jobs, but they were afraid of the foreshadowing of what may have come, so people stopped paying their property taxes. So the county, the money came down through the feds, it came down through pass-through, when I say pass-through, meaning the money doesn't come directly through, through, through the feds, it came through, usually it was through the county. So with that being said, um, a lot of municipalities, and I did check with Ms. E., um, she did report payroll, so that's what I'm using it for, those are the plans that I have to use it for when we have extra money. I just don't think that it is fiscally responsible to say I'm going to use that money for something and just blow it in one direction. I'm not saying that that money is going to go out the door in one chunk, we may use fifty thousand at a time, a hundred, but it will be used for payroll, and it will be properly reconciled, and it will show where the money was spent.
Okay, which budget?
Moving forward in the budget, that's expended, we, it will be reconciled. Mr. Sevillier, don't leave. So I wanted to, I wanted to be clear about that, and, and transparency, I can show you the past paperwork that was filed, and, and I invite you to go online, don't take it from me, look on the county's website, look on Cook County, look on Will County, see what you're able to spend it on, it's not, it's not a free-for-all.
Mrs. Morgan? You good? You look like you're good right now.
Because there was an ARPA letter that came here to this village, and it states that, um, uh, number of things that could be, the money could be spent on was maybe for the residents, uh, if there were, um, if there were, oh, Lord, Lord.
There were, you could use it for programming, but once again, let me circle back to this.
There's people that have, uh, water has been turned off, and I've been trying to encourage them to start asking for that ARPA money.
So, yes, so one of the things that was discussed is when the second round of ARPA funding comes, there was discussion about doing an amnesty program. I will say that it wasn't just for water, it also had to deal with sidewalks. But the difference here is I don't like announcing things, let me say this, there are, um, I like to announce things as they're getting done, I like to not talk about it, I like to be about it. So I'm not going to sit up and make announcements until I put it together and it's rolled out. But, but you're more than welcome, anytime, I've met with you several times, and I will meet with you several more times, you're more than welcome to come to my office. Like I said, I can actually show you the money, um, that was applied for, and I can actually show you the paperwork that was submitted to ARPA.
Let's stop this right now, you have seen me three times in your life.
Several, yes, three.
The library, in your office, and then Zoom committee.
And you, no, ma'am, you came to my office with Mr. Box, Greg Box, you came with, you came, no, ma'am, you sat in.
It was Zoom committee, not in real world, Mr. Box and myself.
So I had a meeting where you were in my office. Ms. Daleworth, would you like to chime in? Right, so I, I actually, it wasn't a Zoom meeting, I was actually in a meeting with her. Right, and I met with you when I first came in, but that's neither here nor there, I, like I said, I'll meet with you again. I, I do not know you, I actually just met you the first week I got in the week of July twentieth, however. I do not exaggerate at all, but like I said, regardless to whatever, my door is open, I have an open door policy.
Not where you going around talking about, oh, this lady keeps coming here, and she keeps coming over here, and she keeps calling me, the streets talk.
So once again, ma'am.
All right.
My door is open, thank you.
Ms. Daleworth?
So I just wanted to reiterate what David was saying, that, uh, we feel that it should be accounts created, fund accounts created, instead of just creating whole new ones.
And there will be. But we're not going to have seventy-seven accounts, let me say that. There were seventy-seven accounts at one point.
But that was based off of, you, you're saying seventy-seven accounts, but that's because they didn't do what they need to do here at the village, because the bank had to create, because they could not get in contact in here to figure out where to put the money. So that's why we have seventy-seven accounts. But I just want to make sure that, that you're saying that things are going into their accounts, and then also to break up that, yes, like what I was saying, ARPA funds can be used for other things. You were saying just payroll, we're confused, because there are things that can be used for the, the, the community, for the businesses as well, and the other thing that, that's going on with people with their water. So I know you said the next group is going to be used for, but we had this four hundred sixty-eight thousand for over, almost a year. And people have been suffering with different issues for this entire year. So, I understand you're saying for payroll, but you're also saying that here's a million dollars sitting there for Amazon, they already used the money from the general funds, you're going to put it back, use that money to pay the payroll? And offer the services for the.
So there's other infrastructure, I heard you all earlier, you said you needed infrastructure, correct? There's infrastructure issues, do you disagree with that? Okay, there's infrastructure issues that I have to come up with the money for and to find funding, so that is what I'm in the process of doing. Let me say this also, let me say this also, I would allow, I would like to be allowed the same grace. I just got here, so I do have ideas, at the end of the day, this has to be voted on.
Excuse, excuse, Mrs. E., please, Mrs. E., the manager's speaking, Mrs., Mrs. E., please let the manager speak, there's too many conversations going on.
So, but at any rate, I would say this, that I've met with many of you, I have no issue with meeting you all again, I'm open to ideas, um, but, like I said.
I couldn't remember what I was, because, uh, I was stunned. How about that, uh, one hundred seventy-four thousand that was taken from, uh, the, um, what you call it? Special events.
So you can come to my office, we can go through whatever you want, you know. So I have been very open and transparent during this meeting, and like, so you're asking me, let me say this. I just got here, so you're asking me questions that you want me to rattle off, so once again, I'm telling you, you're more than welcome to set up an appointment, if you don't, that's fine also, um, there's such thing called email, you can also FO you things, um, but, but you're at. So ma'am, please. I don't, so if you email me something. There's things that you will email me that I am not going to respond to, especially when you're tagging every single media outlet. Listen, I don't get down like that, I am a professional, and I'm going to remain as such. And if there's certain emails, if there's certain emails, or I feel that I'm being attacked, or I feel as though you're asking me or putting me in a certain situation, no, I'm not going to respond, because it's not, it's not, uh, it's not, it's not productive. So I'm not going to go back and forth with you. Sometimes you tend to be argumentative, with all due respect, and I'm not going to go back and forth, because I have a lot of work to do.
Okay, let's, let's move, let's move forward, guys. Mrs. Hurd had a question regarding this, this item.
Yes, I just have a.
Go ahead, Mrs. Sandra.
One is, I think it's the, we name it as renaming, that might have given the wrong impression, you're really going to allocate it to other areas, okay? Are you not going to have a special events, uh, line item anymore?
There will not be a special events fund. There will not be a special events fund. Now, what I'm saying is some of the money will, it will be reallocated when there's projects, that money will be put in there, and it's going to be the community project fund, whatever the name is. It doesn't make the difference to me, it's that I need the money segregated properly.
I think, we're on the same page there, now, the next question I have is the money that was from Amazon, was that TIF money, and where would that go? The million, is it just going to go to general fund, or was that TIF?
You cannot mingle TIF money. You can't, you can't put, I'm not going to mix TIF money with whatever money you said.
Okay, what, what was the money from, from Amazon, a million?
It was used to purchase equipment, from my understanding, that was prior to me getting here, but I have gotten receipts from the young lady who deals with the accounts, and there was equipment and things like that that was purchased, but it was purchased and taken out of the general fund, but it was never reconciled, so that money is owed to the general fund.
So then Amazon reimbursed?
Wait, let, let, let me, no, one second, one second, let, let, let's give you, Amazon did not fund us the money, okay? It was for the Amazon project, okay? There's a misnomer that says that Amazon funded this money, it did not come from the project, it came from the developer, and I mean, it did not come from Amazon, it came from the developer, okay? Regarding the Amazon project, to get equipment to serve that area which was in TIF, which was squad cars and ambulance, all right? So for clarity, so the money did not come directly from Amazon.
It was a loan.
But not from Amazon, but not from Amazon.
It was not, it was not from Amazon, it was a loan from the developer inside the deal.
Yes.
And is that money you still have to pay back?
So when the money is being paid back, it is not being paid back out the general fund. Just for a short minute, uh, history check, customarily, when the village has done redevelopment agreements, it has given up a hundred percent of the increment to the developers. This is the first time when we bought in the Amazon, it's a seventy-five, twenty-five, seventy-five for Amazon, twenty-five for the village. So when the repayment comes back, it is paid back out of that increment, out of the twenty-five percent increment out of that TIF. That's how the money is supposed to be paid back, it's not out of the general fund.
Just had to bring the seventy-five percent up, right?
There's the fact.
The money was going to general fund.
Yeah, yeah.
So then it's going to come out the general fund, what we have to pay.
So, so repayment is actually paid back out of the, out of the twenty-five percent increment out of that TIF.
That's, a million dollars was, uh, a million dollars impact fee, that is seven percent, that was supposed to be paid back from the contract in three years, I think it was three to four years. That's what the Amazon contract states.
The, the payback is real, but it's where the payback comes from is also as a thing as well, it comes out of the twenty-five percent increment.
But the twenty-five percent increment doesn't happen to twenty years from now? That payment?
No, 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 no. When the TIF closed, that's when all the allocations were closed, and that's when the taxing filed. There are TIF payments on the annual basis, okay? There are TIF payments on the annual basis, not, we don't wait to the twenty-three year expert, and actually, Amazon doesn't even have a twenty-three year TIF, because I think the, the board, we can, did seventeen years, if I'm not mistaken.
No.
I'm just referring to the impact.
No, don't lie, no, no.
How many years?
That's the truth.
How many years? How many years?
You just said, did I, did I say twenty-three? Right, right. Now, can I be recognized for, uh, Ms. Scott?
Yes.
I want to, Ms. Scott, uh, thank you for your explanation about this fund, I would just ask, if, um, I don't know if you had all that written down on the paper, or, could I get, before I vote on this, could I get the bank statement for that for the past, uh, twenty-four months, and I asked the account be redacted, the only thing it shows is the last four digits, respectfully. Uh, I, the.
Absolutely.
She's transparent.
Yes.
And, and I would say, everything I have asked for, Ms. Scott has delivered, so.
Well, can you ask her for my, uh, uh, four years? I have a day on me, I call up at home, I've been here, it's been every year.
It's late, everybody's tired.
Seven, seven, nine, uh, twenty-two?
Four years.
One of the balance of the, um, what's that fund?
The Mo's funds?
No, I gotta ask, I gotta ask the mayor about that, you know, especially on that.
Yeah, that's, that's what she's going to give me, that's right, I just, yeah, she, she, that's what I just asked for, for the two years of it.
So I, I do respect that, but I will give that to you, I'll, I'll send it to the entire board.
Thank you.
And if I can have a copy of, uh, what they said that the money was going to go towards, so that we would be in trouble for September.
Right, I think, I think that if I'm not mistaken, that's usually on the bank statement when, um, when they have it, because I'm going to be honest, there was a bank statement out there, I, it bumped into me.
Where'd it come from?
I don't know, I don't know who had the bank statement, but it bumped into me. So I'm just asking, and I see with my own eyes. From the village manager, I don't want to see, uh, through the streets, the bank statement through the streets, so, all right, are you on my time?
That's the show.
I'll wait for, um.
Okay.
Could I ask this question to you?
You certainly can, Mrs. Morgan.
Okay, um, can I, uh, find out, uh, what's the balance of the Mo's account that these y'all are claiming that we have, which you made.
Mrs. Morgan, I'll tell you exactly, but there is not a Mo's account, the mayor's office, the special event does not have a separate individual account.
A balance of twenty-two. Accidentally got put into, I had invented for the Mo's account balance, and was always told there is no Mo's, like y'all are saying right now, and I think everybody's going to associate me. Have a copy of the. Have a copy of the Moe's account, where you put ten thousand dollars for these links in it. This is what you thought I had donations.
That was true. Isn't there a Moe's account?
I have to.
She ain't gonna answer. You're the secretary of Moe's.
Okay, thank you, man, let's, we're gonna move on, let's, we're gonna close this out, this lady. I just told you it wasn't, okay?
How are they?
Trustee, you should know, you're a trustee, you're sitting trustee.
I have given everybody their mama's.
This, uh.
Moe's account.
What I would like, you know what?
One second, trustee has, go ahead.
There's no Moe's account, I respect that, and I, you know, there's no account. But what I would like to see is all donations that have been given to the, not, to the Mayor's Office of Special Events, or the Special Events account, and care to the Moe's events. I wanna see all donations, from two thousand, I'll go back to twenty-twenty to current, because if they're donating money to the Moe's account, or the Special Events account, or Moe's event. I would like to see.
I can't hear, I'm kidding.
Please, can you guys give the trustee the floor?
I would like to see the donors that is, that are giving to the Special Events account, and I guess since there's no Moe's, in the name of the Mayor's Office of Special Events. So, I'm quite sure there are donors that are giving to these different events that they are having. And so, that's wonderful. Because I do know, I do have an email, we do have an email flow, like trustee said, off the streets. And it was about twenty-four thousand dollars. So, we need to make sure, that I want to see every, every, I wanna see all the bank statements for the Special Events account, that were, that they were using these funds for Moe's events. There may not be a Moe's account, but I wanna see the donors.
Okay.
That have been given to this account for the last two years. I haven't seen for the past years, but I'll look into it for you, trustee, and get you that information. On here, it was, it should say fifty to one hundred dollars. So, we're moving it from that range all the way to a standard to fifty.
Okay, why, why, why are we at that point?
Because.
Well, listen, I don't know if you're familiar with what's going on in the industrial park. You know, there used to be a big truck parking lot where all the trucks can park at. So, now, Amazon has bought that truck parking lot out. And now, it's nothing but Amazon vehicles in that parking lot. So, now, all the truckers, well, they're not going to Moni right now, because Moni's fine is a hundred and fifty bucks. So, they'll come right across the street and park at University Park, because our fine is very, very minimal, I think they were getting fined only fifty bucks. So, they'll take a fifty-dollar fine, opposed to a hundred and fifty-dollar fine across the street. But now, they're putting, you know, it's bad already out there by the pilot and Hamilton and everything else. So, to discourage them from coming in just out of, tend up our roads, we would increase our fines to two hundred and fifty bucks. That's what the whole legislation, that's what the piece is about.
Uh, we have, do we have a sign or anything out there, is it deterrents?
Not, not, not yet, not yet, there's no, no truck parking or anything. This probably just happened within the last sixty days. Or, go ahead, trustee. Four, four months ago, it's been in the works, but I know for sure now, right across, I think it's from Burger King, there was to be a huge truck parking lot. And that's why another person was trying to get truck parking lot added on, because there was an opportunity. So, the truck parking lot is very, you know, lucrative, they pay a good amount of money. But when Amazon came in and said, "We need this for us," then they moved all the trucks out, now all the trucks that come in our industrial park are scattered all over the park. So, sometimes you see twelve to fifteen trucks on University Park, full of cabs and everything knocked out the street.
So, you're saying that, instead of them going up into the Moni truck stop to pay, because if I'm not mistaken, you know, if you go there overnight, you have to pay a fee, right?
Well, it's gone now, that's gone, it's gone. It's been bought by Amazon, it's only Amazon trucks there now.
So, at the pilot, we're talking about down by the pilot?
No, 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 there was a huge parking lot, a huge truck parking lot with a gatekeeper right in front of it. I think there was, you know, two hundred, two hundred and fifty trucks.
In front of Amazon?
No, no.
What area are we talking?
It's right on.
Central?
No, it's on Moni, it's on Moni, they had to go into the expressway, but it's a huge parking lot. No, 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 it's on the main street, it's between.
By McDonald's, right?
It's, it's, it's a further east from McDonald's, on the same side of the street.
By Los Feritos.
Yeah, somewhere in that area, it's sort of right of Los Feritos, absolutely.
Right, so they bought that?
That's Amazon now, yeah. Nothing but Amazon trucks now, so that's why you have a mad scramble for everybody to come parking.
Wow.
And that's increased revenue for the village.
Right.
It's revenue.
Okay, um, yeah, because, yeah, the first thing that come out of a trucker's mouth on the radio was three thirty-five. They asked.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, and so, we wanna go from fifty to two fifty. What's the input from the police department? And how many tickets have we been writing? I know we spoke of deterrence, I'm just saying, before we make a huge legislative, you know.
Very minimal, fifty buck ticket. No, 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 that's what's been the norm, is a fifty buck ticket, because our range, our range was between ten bucks and a hundred bucks, so they stayed in the middle, maybe the average ticket was fifty bucks.
So, they was, right. Hey, look, the only reason why I say, say if a resident who drives trucks come home, shouldn't come home, but he came home, that's a two hundred and fifty dollar ticket he gotta pay. Um, is in some way, Jim, we can tweak it where, out in that area, is a two fifty flat?
It's a two fifty flat.
I'm just saying, in that area.
I think it's all truck parked in the industrial park, because if you look at that.
Right, wait a minute.
Right now, they're parking on Hamilton, is that's on the side of the pilot. They're parking anywhere they can.
Right, they will.
Yeah, they're parking Hamilton, they're parking Bond. Yeah, they're saturated all throughout the industrial park. You ride out there about midnight, and you'll see trucks all in the first department area. And that's additional revenue.
All up and down the street.
Hamilton, Bond, Central, Boston, they're looking for a gap. They've been kicked out of their house.
Trustee, if you'd like, I can review that tomorrow, see if I can pull the tickets that we've written, just so you can get an idea of the revenue. And actually, I probably can actually look at the budget for that, but I'll review that and get that to you.
Yes, if we can, frankly, see that, that this section does not apply to trucks and trailers parking within the area of Village, University Park, Zone One, which is industrial. Okay, I'm for, I mean, I would be, if I could get that information.
I will get that information and send it to the entire board.
Okay.
You good with moving this forward, trustee, for next Tuesday? Alright, so, and along with that, as you mentioned earlier, go signage, alright, yeah?
Right, because the first thing they do is snap a picture today.
Hey, wasn't no sign here.
Wasn't no signage. So, we're, we're posting and making, you know, and technically, they're right, just like, Ms. Webb.
Six a.m. to two p.m.
Right, like Ms. Webb, the reason why I say the signage is important, because Ms. Webb, I don't think it came before the board or to Ms. Scott yet, but I spoke about it, she's out of town. One thing that was a definite, when you, in every entrance in Country Club Hills, we have the signage, so it's no excuse to the six trucks, and one was.
Free sweep in this day, don't move your cars, slower movement this day, no parking on the streets, yeah?
I just think that the signage is more, is very important, because to my understanding, this village, those who do get out on tickets because of our signage problem. We place a signage ten feet in the air of no parking, nobody mom is gonna see that in the middle of the night.
And it's your legal sign anyway, because signs have to be a certain state height.
That's my point, because I see that no truck coming down this way, that no trucks park, that sign is very high out there on Western. I mean, you're gonna miss it.
Alright, so we're good moving this forward, Mrs. Scott's gonna give you the copy of the tickets that are actually written. And additionally, with this, this goes forward, when this goes forward next week, we wanna make sure that we have additional signage. Alright, add it to that as well, alright, for a morning. Last item, hallelujah, I love this, this is good to get back in person. Go on, Madam Burton. Five, one, I, a discussion, presentation, resolution for the twenty-twenty-two ComEd Green Region Grant Open Lands. Mrs. Scott, your, oh, Mrs. E, your show.
I'll make this very quick. Judges on August sixteen, received award congratulating of being awarded a ten thousand dollar grant from Openland slash ComEd. And this grant was to assist in the mediation of water runoffs and other things as it related to the Veterans Garden up here, because during the Christmas holidays, we would put, we still do put decorations up there and some other kinds of things. There's right now a concrete wall there, and it doesn't substantiate for the vegetation that exists. So, we went to ComEd and requested that we be awarded this ten thousand dollars to do, to include some foliage, some shrubberies, some trees, rock garden similarly. And, and we did the explanation as to other preliminary information as to why we were recruiting this. But what justified this is the fact that it was open space with very little occupancy, and we were awarded this grant without a match, so. The village, we have yet to, they alleged that they sent us a check, but technically, the village did not receive a check, and we're waiting on a check to come. So, they said they sent out a check on July eighteenth, but that check never hit us through the postal service, and to confirm it, based on the agent, they never saw the check being canceled. It never came through our banking system, so they're reissuing a check, ten thousand dollars, and hopefully, we get some money, then we can get the job done to enhance that area. That's it, ma'am.
What area is one of the veterans, President?
Veterans Wall, that Veterans Wall, land sweeping out there.
Yeah, we're moving forward.
He says, either way goes, alright.
We'll put this on the next agenda.
We're good at moving forward, we have to submit a resolution or motion for agreement.
Yeah.
So, okay. So, there is a motion by trustee Brooks for a German, is there a second by trustee Jenkins-Bell? All in favor? Opposed, none? Thank goodness, thank you guys for a great meeting, it's good to have a discussion.